Call the meeting to order. In attendance is everyone except Josh Ork, and I'm assuming he's on his way. And first order of business is swear in our new board members. And any elected or appointed board member must qualify by taking an oath of office before assuming the duties of office. And each of you have a copy of that oath, and I'll just take you in alphabetical order. And if, Daniel, you read your oath first.
Okay. Do I need to adjust the microphone?
Just have it in front of you.
In front of me there?
Yeah.
All right. I, Daniel M. Cote, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the policies of the Silver Falls School District. I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Members according to the best of my ability during the term for which I have been appointed.
Welcome to the board. Okay, Sarah?
I, Sarah Deliski, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the policy of the Silver Falls School District. I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Member according to the best of my ability during the term for which I have been appointed.
Welcome. And Wally?
I, Walter Lerman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and the laws thereof, and the policies of the Silver Falls School District. I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Member according to my best of my ability during the term for which I've been appointed.
Welcome, all three of you, and may we have a great couple of years.
Thank you.
All of us together. Okay, in agenda review, the only thing I, before I ask for a motion for approve the agenda, the only thing I have to say is, as I know some may be aware and some may not, generally speaking, our first meeting in July is when we have elections of officers and our organizational pieces and all that. Because we're doing a workshop tonight, and so Debbie checked with OSBA evidently, and it was best practice if we do the officers and everything at our first regular meeting, which will be later in the month. And then we'll have our other organizational pieces that we do at that time also. And so that is the wise and wherefore. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for accepting the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
It's been moved in second to approve the agenda as presented. Usual sign for us is in favor is aye, against nay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed nay? Pass unanimously. And now, I'll turn it over to Janet to give us her wisdom.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me tonight. So, we're gonna be doing a training on Board Governance Essentials. It's a really great training for new board members. Congratulations to those new board members on the board. But it's also great for experienced board members as well. So hopefully, everyone learns something new. That's how I know I did my job right. So my name is Janet Avila Medina. I am a board development specialist at the Oregon School Boards Association. Before I tell you just a little bit about me, I want to take a step back and just kinda talk about Oregon School Boards Association, acronym OSBA. This is our vision, our mission, and our values. I'll just read our mission. OSBA empowers all public school boards with the knowledge, skills, tools, and resources to govern, lead, and advocate for improving students' success and positive outcomes for every learner. So we work with school boards, but we also work with education service districts. I've worked with many over my past five years working with OSBA. And we also work with charter school boards and community college boards as well. So we serve a lot of you, and I'm gonna be talking more about that at the end. But I'll just kind of, I'm on the board development team, but we have a lot of different services. I'm not gonna discuss what all these services are, but I am gonna encourage you, and we had actually today our webinar, so you can meet and greet all the directors of those departments and the different services that we provide. So if you're interested in learning more, I'm gonna be talking mostly about board development. We support our professional development training. Go ahead and check out that webinar, and I will show you where to find that later tonight. All right, so now coming back to me, your facilitator for tonight, I like to just spend a little bit of time talking about why we're here. My why, which I'm gonna model right now for you all, and I'm gonna ask you all to do the same thing here in a bit. So, just really briefly, who am I? I've been with OSBA for almost five years, in November. But prior to that, I have a lot of experience. I worked in early learning services, and I also have a master's of public policy and education. I am a strong believer in the public education system. I went through it here in Oregon, born and raised in Hood River. So I graduated from HRVHS, go Eagles! And I come from a very large Latina family, that my culture is very important to me. And I share this because I am the baby of a family of eight. So I have not served on a board. However, I know what it's like to have different opinions and perspectives, and believe me, with my family, we have had a lot of disagreements, and that's okay. But we come to solutions. So just wanted to share that in terms of how it applies to you all. But I have a lot of experience working with boards over the past five years with many size school districts, rural, urban, et cetera. So that's just a little bit of me, and again, strong advocate for education. I really believe the key to success is education. So, I would love for each of you just very briefly to say your name. Where did you go to high school, and why are you on the board? What's your why? We'll just start over here with Tom.
Yeah, my name is Tom Buchholz. I went to Silverton High School. And I'm on the school board 'cause I like, we're a very, this, this school district's very large company. It's made up of lots of formerly small, small school districts, and I like the fact that we maintain that model, and we have those small, rurally located schools that help maintain the distinct community identities.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah Deliski. I went to Westview High School in Beaverton. I'm here because I'm an educator. I've been a teacher for 22 years, and I want to be a voice for teachers in this district. I also have two children in this district that I wanna be a voice for as a parent.
My name's Derek Foxworth. I went to Centeno High School around the border of Portland and Gresham. Like several people, I'm a parent, community member. I have several kids in the district, I've coached in the district, and I can't really think of a more valuable way to spend time than investing our young people in their future.
Great, thank you.
My name's Phil Weisner. I went to Silverton High School. And I got myself on the board. I'm a retired educator and coach, and did for 35, 36, and 45 years respectfully. So I have a soft spot for education and kids to begin with. And I was hoping that I could offer some of, bring some of that expertise to the forefront and be help in making good decisions. And I believe everyone should serve their community, one way or another, and so it's my way of giving back after I've finished my career. So that's mine.
Thanks, Phil.
My name is Ed Daniel Cote. I graduated from Jesuit High School in Quebec City, Canada. I am on the board because I felt it was a good time for me to bring in, I have extensive experience in governmental board, higher education boards, and large organizational boards, national and international. And I felt that the board needed, could use, not needed, could use my experience. I have three kids that came through the school system here very successfully, had fantastic experience, and I just thought I would help out and make sure that all the other kids that are here now and will come in the future have a similar experience.
I'm Wally Lerman. I went to Salem Academy. I'm on the board because I care about our community. I was previously on the board for over 20 years. My children have all gone through the school system here. It means a lot to me. They've had a great experience, and now I have grandchildren coming into the district. I want the very best for them, and have the same experiences my kids had.
Great, thank you. Hi, Josh, welcome.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Mess of first. That's my bad. So, Silverton High School, and trying to serve my community the best I can.
Awesome. And then I'd also like to hear from a superintendent. If you can just briefly share, where did you go to high school, and why are you a superintendent?
Yeah, I'm Kim Kellison, and I went to high school at McKenzie High School, which is in Blue River, Oregon. It's a very small high school. I had 24 kids in my graduating class, very tiny. I am a superintendent because I believe in the power of education to transform the lives of people that have been marginalized or who have been not well taken care of over time. And I think that being in this environment has been really a great experience and has broadened my skill set a lot, and I really love working in Silverton and Silver Falls. And I think that we're gonna have an awesome year this year, and so just anxious to serve all kids in our district and help them be as high achieving as they can be.
Amazing, thank you. Debbie, you're an important part of the team, so I would love for you to also participate in this activity. Where did you go to high school, and why are you in your role?
I went to Minachi High School in Porterville, California. It's very, it's much smaller than from this area. And I, I started to work here because I wanted to be part of the community. We moved here, we didn't know anybody, and I stayed at home with our kids for 10 years, and they started school, and I wanted to be connected to what they were part of. So, here I am, 17 years later.
Fantastic. Well, thank you all, I appreciate that. I hope that you learned something new about your fellow colleagues here. And the reason why we do this, everything I do tonight has a purpose. How many of you have heard of cynic? Yeah, raise of hands, okay. So, really important to, especially during challenge, when it becomes challenging, to always focus back on your why. And it can be, I heard a lot of you say you care about students, that's amazing, the community, and sometimes you may face some challenges, and it's okay to agree to disagree. Otherwise, there would just be one board member. It's important to have different perspectives at the table, different lived experiences, et cetera. And many of you come with a lot of that, as you were just introducing each other. But it's important sometimes to come back to that why. Why are you doing this work? So, that's why I just wanted to spend a little bit of time with that. So, you know, your why is to improve student outcomes for all your students, and it's really important to keep that at the center of all of your work. It's, you know, we tell boards it's really important that you have that single belief that all students can and will learn. And what does that, what does that mean, right? Can every student learn? Can every student show growth? Can every student succeed? What percent of students not graduating is acceptable for your board? What does success mean or look like for your students? Right, so I'm just, this is just information that I just wanted to share with you all. How many of you know or have seen this district profile? Raise of hands. Oh, all of you? Great. Or there's some that you haven't. I'll pass this around, just so you can see it. Take one, pass it. You don't have to squint your-
I think I have seen that one.
Just so you don't have to squint your eyes, and maybe if you've already seen it, just a little refresher.
Thank you.
This is from the Oregon Department of Education. They put this out every year. This is the 2324, but I just wanted to share it with you all. In terms of knowing who your students are, do you know? No, you're good. Do you know, you know, demographics, how many are participating in extracurricular activities, how many maybe live in poverty, how many didn't graduate last year, and why? How many maybe, you know, absenteeism rates, and again, the correlation, why? Who are those students who maybe are attending less? Who are those students who maybe aren't attending X, Y, and Z extracurricular activities? Those are what we call, in your governance role as a board, some questions that you can ask when it comes to data. And I'll talk more about that later tonight. So, that brings me to our agenda for today. So, again, this is a board governance essentials training. It's around the roles and responsibilities, really understanding the do's and don'ts as a board member, and that can be easier said than done, and it isn't always black and white, and we're gonna talk about that. Really going to focus on governance versus management. I'm gonna bring it to the research. I've seen this as well in the many districts that I've worked with over the past five years, but I'm gonna bring in the research, and we're gonna talk about the 12 effective boardmanship standards. And then we're gonna apply some best practices. We're gonna, I'm gonna share with you some scenarios. This is usually the, the area where many boards find joy in, and again, just a fun way to retain information. I'm gonna be sharing a lot of information tonight, and so new board members, bear with me. I will share these slides afterwards. Also, I strongly encourage you to participate. You know, you're the experts in the room as well, and so I, I'm here to facilitate, to guide you, and share best practices and the latest, up-to-date information on research so that you can be an effective, high-functioning board. What's not on the agenda, I will not be covering public meetings law because I am not an attorney or executive session, but I will guide you to other resources where you can find that information. Like I said, there's other services in my organization. I won't cover ethics law. School finance, we'll touch just a little bit on, but again, not a deep dive, and policy as well. We will reference some, and I even brought a little packet to share with you all of policies that you should familiarize yourself with. There's a lot of policies, so this is just a little sample, and some that will, I'll reference when we're doing those scenario practice. Okay, so it's a very, in a, a very interactive training, so I'm gonna be putting you to work. I'm not gonna be doing all the talking tonight. So with that, it's good for me to just know, you kinda saw already, I'll bring it back, the kind of big areas I'll be covering. What are you hoping to learn today? Just feel free to share out popcorn style. I'm gonna write it down. It will be our parking lot that we can come back to at the end. Maybe one or two things that you're hoping to share, hoping to learn today when you leave this room.
Probably just more fine-tuned on, on roles. I mean, we got broad strokes of, of it, but sometimes, you mentioned it earlier, there's a, a fine line between governance and management, and we're here for one, not the others.
Correct, thank you. So more details on the roles. What else?
I would second that. Sometimes it's making sure that we stay in our lane, essentially, and not overstepping into territory that's operational, and trying to make sure we have a healthy relationship with the superintendent.
Mm-hmm. We will definitely talk about operational role, which is the superintendent's role. And then I, I heard you say relationship. Love that keyword. Anything else?
On relationships, I'd say a key is how to, there's a fine line sometimes between being inquisitive and being accusatory. And not wanting to cross that line, not wanting to get close to it, but how to manipulate that.
How to stay informed, but within your role.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that, informed oversight. Anything else? This is great. It's a great starting list. Anything else, superintendent? Feel free also, if there's something you're hoping to learn today.
I'm just how to, you know, be a team that's energized around students and student-focused, I think is my goal. I think we've shown that historically, but just continuing that path of having students at the center of everything we do.
Of course, yeah. Your why. Great. All right, well, if anything comes to mind, let me know, and this is our little parking lot, and we'll come back to it. But I can tell you right now, we will be covering all of this. Okay? And if not, hold me accountable. Okay?
I love that comment about being student-focused. Thank you.
You're welcome. Definitely put a big star.
I really believe that.
Okay. I told you I'm putting you to work today. And again, it's okay. Take a guess, all right? We're here to learn together. This is your opportunity. That's what a work session's are for, so that you can build those team skills, those leadership skills, et cetera. So, think for a minute, and then I'll ask you to share, and I can just hear from a few of you, not all of you. Why does the board matter?
We represent the community.
Mm-hmm. What else?
Well, you mean like, we set the policies and, and the direction-
Ooh.
-of, of the school district.
And goals.
And, and we supervise the superintendent.
There you go.
In a very friendly way.
Uh-huh. You hire the superintendent, right?
Yep.
Yep, we'll talk about that. Oops, sorry. And then I love those keywords, policy, direction. Anything else? This is great.
Impact. I think the board obviously can have a significant positive impact on the community or a negative impact, depending on the decisions and policies it puts into place.
Mm-hmm. Impacts the community, your students, right, which is part of your community. Absolutely. We'll talk about that as well. All right, this is a good list, unless somebody else has something else they wanna throw up.
Well, I think we, we need to make sure that we're clear that we have a fiduciary responsibility towards the taxpayers.
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're, we're playing with tax money here, and, and that's very important that we're responsible with it.
Mm-hmm. The budget, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Great. I probably did not spell that right, so my apologies. Anything else? This is a great list, y'all, and keywords again, right? Community, goals, policy, direction, supervising the superintendent, impact, and the budget. We're gonna cover all of that in terms of your roles and responsibilities. Great. How about, why does board culture matter?
I think that's significant. If you've got a toxic board culture, or a board that can't agree if we disagree, you know, one of our big pieces is modeling the way and setting expectations, so I think, you know, historically, we've really taken that to heart to, again, model the way for our students.
We, we set the culture for the whole district. If I had to start here, keep people at this table really happy, they will in turn get the admin happy, and we'll turn, keep the student and the teachers happy.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that's, that's super important.
Absolutely.
And helps us with going one way, not seven ways.
Mm-hmm. Stay on track. Focus, yep.
One thing I always appreciated about my previous service on the board is that we could debate hot issues fervently. At the end of the day, we'd vote, we'd shake hands, and we'd move forward, and it's really important.
Yeah, so again, agree to disagree with respect, right?
Support the decision.
Mm-hmm. Oh, support the decision, yep. Great. Right, and we've been saying, you know, because if you voted against it, you may not support, right, what gets decided, but you acknowledge that that's the process. You acknowledge that this decision was debated, deliberated, and then the decision was-
And don't work against it after the votes have been made.
Yes, exactly, right? That's super important in how that message kind of relates, yep.
Actually, everyone should understand, it's their responsibility to support the decision that the board comes out with, regardless of what the vote was.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. That's how you maintain that positive board culture, right? Respect, having mutual respect for each other. Again, okay to agree to disagree, but at the end of the day, when decision gets made, and you have to support, acknowledge that the process, and take that throughout with you. Great. Anything else is a fantastic list, I love it. I'm wondering if some of you have come to our conferences or new by training, because we talk about this all the time. You model the way for students, how you're making your deliberations, you're modeling the way, right? How you're speaking to each other, how you communicate with each other when you're making deliberations on important decisions on policy, budget, et cetera. You're modeling the way from students. It starts with you, with your actions and your behaviors. Great. I have one more for y'all. Where did my clicker go? Why does your relationship with the superintendent matter? And I know somebody already said, "Always supervise," but why does it matter?
Well, it matters in the sense of just what we talked about with the culture of the board. The board's gotta have a definite, good working relationship with the CEO or superintendent because to move forward, if we're going against each other, the district and the students suffer. And there needs to be a, again, agree to disagree sometimes, and, and respectful of each other.
Yeah, the, the superintendent is supposed to be focused on, on the students, not refereeing drama between the adults, which is toxic.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's management 101. Can't, you know, you can't make life miserable for your most important employee, in our case, our only employee, right? So.
Right, yeah. And it's super important, right, when you hire the superintendent, that you trust, right? And that, that's, that is how you maintain that working relationship, that trust, and we're gonna talk a lot about that, how that trust, and how you hold the system accountable, and how you support each other. So we'll talk a lot of what that looks like. Great, y'all, thank you. All right, so as you all mentioned, you impact students, right? And this is something we like to share with boards, this is rooted in research, but again, I have seen it when there's dysfunction and how that delays the work and ends up impacting your students, impacting all of your relationships with each other and with the superintendent. So, it's really, it starts with you as individual board members, knowing your roles and responsibilities, everything you just said, your board, and then your board work, how you make decisions, right? Speaking with one voice, coming to one decision, and supporting that. Your culture, right? How you, how you have healthy debates, how you are modeling the way for your students has an impact into the organizational culture, into the district culture, into the relationship with the superintendent, which then impacts classroom instruction, because, you know, sometimes we hear boards, "Well, we're not, we're far removed from the classroom." You are, but you do still have an impact, and then your impact is the students, right? So it's this causal chain. I like to call it the domino effect, just a fun way for you to, again, retain information. I'll be sharing a lot of little analogies here and there, just to help retain the information. So I just wanna share, there's been a lot of research, again, right? This is rooted, everything I'm talking about is rooted in research, but I've also seen it. And so, how many of you have seen or heard of these researchers, and particularly the lighthouse study? I'm seeing nodding heads, yes. So we used to focus a lot on the lighthouse study and the five best practices for boards, and that, that research is fantastic. It started to really find how board actions, behaviors have a correlation and impacting students, but there's been research since then. And so, us at board development, my team, we are constantly looking at the latest research so that we are informing you all with the best tools that you have so you can be an effective functioning board. So I'm gonna be talking about this researcher, Tom Alsberry, who has heard of him. We have brought him, we talk about him a lot. We started, we moved away from the five best practices to now the 12 balanced governance standards, which I'm gonna walk you through fairly quickly, but if there is an area that you want to learn more on, we will, we will put it on the parking lot, and if there's time at the end, we'll come back to it. But I do wanna make sure that we're able to cover all of, all of the material tonight. So Tom Alsberry, he's a researcher that we started applying those 12 balanced governance that I'm gonna walk you through here in a moment, essentially roles and responsibilities of the board, budgets on there, culture, et cetera. Before that, though, I just wanna share a little bit of time on the research that is tied, that has shown what, what practices are associated with low-performing boards. So that way, you don't, you don't do this, right? It would be not my disservice if I didn't share this, because I don't want you to find yourself in this situation. So, it's paced out into a couple categories here, less time spent on students. So your meetings are less orderly, right? Are your agenda items always focusing on how this is impacting students, right? The data that's getting presented to you, how is it tied to the district goals, to the mission of the district, et cetera. So that's what we call less time spent on student achievement. This one is a big one, anecdotes and agendas, personal agendas driving decisions. You definitely don't wanna do that, and it's easier said than done, especially if you have kiddos at the district or you know teachers. or you know teachers, or, you know, your constituents are coming to you with X, Y, and Z. You want to make sure, right, you have all the facts. So making sure that anecdotes and personal experiences don't drive decisions, really focusing on the facts, focusing on the information that Kim shares with you, the superintendent, who is the person you hired that you trust, the educational expert, right? Who knows what's happening, the day-to-day operations of the district. So I just wanted to share that. Poor relationships, we talked about that, right? Super important to maintain those working relationships, team. You're a team. You are collaborative. We often like to use that keyword, collaborative is your, is your work as well. So those are just a couple things. Micromanagement. When you start to get into the day-to-day operations, asking que, I mean, you can ask questions and we'll talk about what that looks like. But when it starts to get into, you know, the day-to-day operations, we call that micromanaging or getting into the weeds. And so making sure you're setting clear expectations for each other, the board and the superintendent, right? It's always great to communicate. Oftentimes, that's the key piece, sometimes that gets missed, is really communicate, seek to understand each other, don't assume bad intentions. And, and that's how you'll maintain that trust. That's how you'll maintain that positive working relationship. And then external blaming. So blaming external factors, right? Blaming, you know, parents or teachers for, for low performance. Okay, so we'll, we'll talk more about that as well. So this is, again, practices associated with low performing boards. These are pitfalls that I don't want you to fall into. Now, on the flip side, high performing boards, those are the 12 governance standards I'm going to walk you through. But really, again, some other research here, the lighthouse and a couple others, and Alsberry, the one we're going to walk you through here in a moment. High performing boards, and you said it earlier, I think, Daniel, set a vision, have a goal, district goals. You create those conditions for success. That's that culture and climate we just talked about. You hold the system accountable. But not only each, not only the superintendent accountable with the superintendent evaluation to evaluate the performance of your superintendent, but you have to hold each other accountable too. Do professional development training like you are today, kudos. You know, how do you assess your performance? And I'll be sharing a tool with you all about that as well. And again, learn together as a team and a community engagement, right? We talked about how you represent the community and talk more about how you engage with the community tonight. Alright. So how do you maintain or become a high performing board? Well, before I dive into the 12 standards, it really is about understanding your roles and responsibilities. Governance versus management, right? So we like to use, I stole this from my colleague, so I'll give credit to my colleague Vince Adams. Some of you may, may know who he is. You know, when you purchase a ticket, you know where you're going, right? You know the destination. And I don't know about you, but I trust that the pilot is trained and is going to get me safely to my destination. Sometimes there may be challenges. I actually just recently went to Florida for the first time and went through a storm. And so there was turbulence, there may be challenges, and you may get a little shaky. But you, you know, you know that they're going to get you there as safely as possible. And when they, when you do land safely, you're very thankful, right? Of, of that, of that pilot that got you there safely. So similar, this is just an analogy, again, a fun way to retain information. You need to trust the superintendent, that you need to help set the direction. Where do you want the district to be? Where do you envision your students? What does success mean? And define that together. But again, trust that the superintendent is going to manage that day-to-day operations. And so the board is the how, or sorry, the what? How it gets done is the superintendent's role, right? So that's what governance means. So you're the governance, superintendent is the management side of it. So with Tom Alsberry, the researcher that I'm going to walk you through here of the 12 standards, there's a balanced governance approach. And I think this is a really great, and a lot of boards resonate with this, is that we don't want you on either side of this continuum. We don't want you to be a disengaged rubber stamp board. We're, we call them nodding heads, right? You're getting information from the superintendent, you're saying, "Yep, that looks good, we agree." But you also don't want to be an overreaching micromanaging board either. You want to stay informed oversight. You want to make sure that you are informed enough so that you can make informed decisions on policy, on the budget. And how to do that, well, that's, that's the superintendent, right? Getting you that information. And you all asking the right questions, right? So that you are making the right decisions for your students, right? So that you are positively impacting your students. So you're a team, and you want to maintain in that balance. And so that's what we called, that's what Tom Alsberry calls the balanced governance approach. So again, governance versus management, board, you adopt policy. Budget adoption, program adoption, curriculum adoption, you engage with the community. You stay informed on oversight, you monitor the district goals to ensure progress is being made. On the flip side, superintendent implements those policies. And sometimes you'll see an AR, administrative regulation, attached to your policy. I have a sample in the packet here. And so, you know, there's the difference there. Also manages the budget spending, program implementation, right? You get the picture, curriculum, recommendation, community engagement as well. The superintendent publicly leads the district, so really working together on how information gets then shared out with the community, right? And making sure you have that information. So if your approach at the grocery store, especially in smaller communities, you know how to, how to respond, right? You cannot speak on behalf of the board unless you have the authority to do so, though. I will, I will make sure you're aware of that. So this is what you don't want to have happen, right? Your, your board superintendent relationship, you want it to maintain balance, right? And if it does tip over, or you feel like maybe you are micromanaging your superintendent, how do you, how would you kind of get back to that balanced governance? Well, communicating, setting expectations. And we have tools for that. How many of you have heard of a board operating agreement? Yeah. Or a board superintendent operating agreement. Yeah. That's a really great tool. I'll share it with you at the end where you can find all of the resources that you have available as a member of OSBA. Alright, how are we doing with time? We're doing great. I'll make sure we take breaks, but I believe I have you for up to three hours, is that correct? Okay. Yeah. And we may finish early. We'll, we'll see. Okay, so now, let's just briefly walk through the balanced governance standards. So practices associated with high performing boards. Alright. So the first one, if I go back to, to the board, when I asked you why the board matters, vision-directed planning, that's standard number one. And that's really around the board taking time to set the direction. And it's done collaboratively with the superintendent and also with key stakeholders or staff, community. We recommend, you know, if you have your district goals or district priorities, what are they called here at Silver Falls? Are they district goals or district priorities? For the strategic plan?
We're getting ready to rewrite the strategic plan, so.
Oh, okay.
I think goals at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, but maybe priorities, I don't know.
Yeah, so it really depends on the, the terminology varies, but really what I tell boards, it's really just, you know, what are the priorities, where do you, what are the areas that you want to prioritize for your students? That address what are your students' needs. So that is done collaboratively. And we do encourage boards to review those district goals if you have them or district priorities. You know, making sure they're not just posted somewhere on your website or on a wall. But making sure that you really review those every year. Because the strategic plan, that's the direction. Those goals are the direction that your superintendent takes to then create a strategic plan on how those goals are going to be met, right? So there's usually a bunch of strategies, a lot of goals. And really, the, the, the district goals are your guide for everything. Your guide for when you're making decisions on policy, on the budget. Really important that boards know and understand that. And also, and I'll get to that in a moment, making sure that you're monitoring the progress of those district goals to know that impact is being made.
I'll just add, it's important that the employees know that, know those goals as well.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And, and use those as some of their decision-making.
Absolutely. And so that's called just the vision-directed planning, engaging staff, community, and the development of a shared vision focused on student learning. So when we do that process, strategic planning process, we do encourage that it be a collaborative process. And you bring in, especially if you're starting from the beginning, bring in community members to help you with creating that direction of the district. And then the board adopts it. And then that's the direction that the superintendent takes to create the strategic plan.
How often do you recommend to do this?
To review the, the district goals, every year. Every year, because that strategic plan is a roadmap. It sometimes may change, and that's okay. Oftentimes, I'm glad you asked that, boards sometimes get stuck on like, "Oh, here's a strategic plan, we got to follow it." And it's like, no, sometimes the roadmap may change, the direction may change, and that's okay. And that's why every year you should be reviewing and making sure that those are still the district goals and the strategies that make sense for that.
Can I chime in on that for a second?
Of course.
We, we didn't spend, I mean, I, we had goal, I had goals, but I think due to our budget issue that we had in the previous year, I, I think our goal was kind of like survival this year. We were just trying to recover and, you know, really support teachers and staff and just really in recovery mode. And so it's maybe a little different for us now. We'll hit the ground running and we'll hit that hard. And in fact, in board retreat, you know, when we get together this year, we'll go with those goals and all that.
Right. Fantastic. And so that's vision-directed planning.
Right.
And if you have any questions, we can come back to it.
I do, I do have one for.
Yeah.
Because Dr. Kotay did ask, I actually think there is a law that says we're supposed to redo the strategic plan every so many years. Is that true? Because were we doing it not because we want to, because we're required to? Is that correct?
It expired in 2025, so it is, it's essentially kind of null and void now, like it's not really a live document anymore.
It expired because we wrote it into it, or because, I don't quite understand?
When you work on a strategic plan, they usually have a lifetime, you know, span, a lifespan because you don't want it to be too long or too short. So you try and pick a span where you think you can accomplish those things that are in your strategic plan. And so like, one major thing in, in the previous strategic plan was for us to pass them on. Like, that's a third of our strategic plan. And that didn't happen. And so we'll have to talk about that as we move forward. But I think that having a three to five-year span, Josh, is kind of the norm.
It is. Sometimes they'll be, yeah, five to seven, it kind of varies. But I think what you're referring to is maybe the continuous improvement plan with the Oregon Department of Education. And then, yeah, yes. And sometimes it can be like overlapped. And so ODE does have information about that because it can be a little confusing, the continuous improvement plan and then the strategic plan. They sometimes do overlap, but they are kind of separate things. Yeah.
Sorry not to beat a dead horse, but just again, for our new board members and Kim touched on this a little bit. When Kim came on board, like, our primary focus was stabilization of the district. And so with that one year kind of direction we gave her, that was her main focus. We knew that the strategic plan and vision was going to be ending. And so that'll be kind of where we start as new, as a new board collectively, like building that, putting that together. So this, I think, is real timely for us, so thank you.
Of course. And we have other resources. We actually, there's a webinar on our strategic planning process if you're interested in learning more about that. It is a paid webinar, but it's, I think, $15 to access it. Most of our webinars are free, but we are moving towards a different kind of module of more online tool training. So you actually get something, not just watch a webinar. So I'll share that with you, Kim, because it's a wonderful resource. And we have some additional, like a monitoring plan attached to that on how to also, once the plan is done, how the board then selects one piece of information or data that they want to track throughout the year to ensure progress is being made. And that's the piece that sometimes gets missed, is that monitoring plan. So since you're starting this process, you know, all over again and creating a new strategic plan or revising, taking from your current and revising it, I, I can share that resource with you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not sure if you're aware, maybe you are, we have an extremely young board here, right? Everybody, Tom has many years, but everybody else has two years, or this is our first meeting. Well, he's got a lot of experience, but he'd been off for a while.
Absolutely.
He missed part of it. So, so yeah, so I think we have a lot of work to do in that department, definitely.
Yeah, and that's okay. And I'll put it on the parking lot so we don't forget it. Strategic planning process. Yeah, thanks for sharing that. Like I said, there's going to be a lot of new information thrown at you. So please, I, I am going to stop too after, I'm going to cover four and then pause to see if there's any questions, but you can also chime in like we're doing right now, totally fine. Because I want to make sure you ask those questions and I'm here as, as your resource, so utilize me. Okay, so the next one is community engagement. And that one is very complex. As you all know, the community elected you, right? They trust you. But it's really important that, you know, you know your role and how you engage with the community. I would say a meaningful way to engage with the community is including them in that vision-directed planning process. So that you, from the beginning, ask them kind of what, what our students need. Especially if you're looking at revising the mission or vision of your strategic plan, asking your community, students, parents, including them in that process. That, to me, in my opinion, is meaningful engagement. There are other avenues, right? You have public comment, policy and procedure. I will be sharing that. However, I will preface it with saying, we know that public comment can sometimes be very frustrating on both ends because our best practice is that boards during public comment only listen, not react, not respond back. And that's for a variety of reasons. We want to make sure that you're listening to everyone as a whole. It's important that you don't answer, just in case you don't have all the facts yet to answer. Also, oftentimes, it's going to fall under the purview of the superintendent to, to address some of those concerns. Yes, Josh?
So community engagement. And I'm just curious, you know, from OSBA and your perspective of social media, we have a couple community engagement sites, particularly for the school district. And this is my personal opinion, I find that when individual board members can go on there, again, my opinion, can be a way they can undermine maybe the rest of the board or jump in when it's probably the role of the school district itself to answer those questions. I have seen it being divisive of the board in the past before I was on it. I just kind of want your opinion on. Would say community engagement, some could say that's a way to engage the community. I could see it being very powerful tool, but I also could see it being a divisive tool as well.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. And actually, there is a scenario that I'm going to be sharing around exactly this. But basically, you know, as best practice, you know, it is, if it is your personal social media and you're removing your board member hat, you can, you can post it, right? Whether it's right or wrong, what you're posting. But just remember that you're being perceived, especially in smaller communities, as a board member. Whether what you're posting is right or wrong. So we encourage to post positive things or post, you know, just like share if there's information about the board meeting or something like that. But, so informational things. But I would encourage to stay, to stay away from that. Because again, whatever you post, whether right or wrong, is still perceived. Even if you say, "This is my personal opinion," right, and you're speaking on behalf of the board, the community is going to perceive it as a board member.
Absolutely.
You're, you're, as a board member. So, and they know who you are, especially in smaller communities. Does that answer your question?
It did. Thank you.
Great.
It, it, just to add, it's a really slippery slope
Yes.
to engage in, especially for the unity of presentation after a vote. Right? When, when we say we take a vote, we can be divided, but we have to support the vote.
Yeah.
If you made a post that opposed it. Okay, so that's why it's very, very dangerous.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And that's why, I mean, I love that you all said you have to support the decision that gets made. Because if out in the community, you can say, I mean, it's all public, public meeting and it's posted now and it's recorded. You can say, "Yeah, I voted against it, but we make decisions as, as a quorum, and I support the will of the board."
You also talked about public comment. I think it's important to remember that the, the board meetings are, are a meeting of the board, not a meeting with the public.
That is correct.
I think that's, I think the general public gets that more confused than board members generally do. Public in general thinks it's a, a right to be involved as opposed to be observers.
Correct. Yeah. Yes. And, you know, we're actually, our policy department, because we know this is a big hot topic usually, public comment, the procedure. Sometimes there's like scripts that get read, but we're gonna, we're gonna look into like what specifically kind of can be shared so that the expectations are set from the beginning, right? So the community knows and understands kind of what you're saying, Phil, understanding why the board is only listening, right? And following policy, right? Because you have policy on public comment, you have a procedure on, on public comment as well.
It's a little bit confusing because city council doesn't. It's a little bit confusing because city council doesn't operate the same way.
Hmm, no, but, yeah. Different forms.
Yep.
And, and also, Phil, what you mentioned, right, um, I, I agree with you. And we say oftentimes, nobody knows what a board member does and neither did you until you ran to be a board and until you start actually putting things into ractas and you start this journey, especially for new board members, you're going to be learning a lot. Um, it can be a steep learning curve. Um, and the community also, that applies to them, they may not understand your role, right? Of governance versus management, everything I'm talking about tonight, right?
Yeah.
Great. Um, effective leadership, uh, that standard is again, established on focused direction, setting expectations um, for each other, for yourselves as a board. Um, you're doing it now by taking this training, right, effective leadership, expanding your leadership skills, um, understanding your roles and responsibilities, being effective leaders, supporting the will of the board. All of that is, is effective leadership. Um, accountability, I, I touched on this a little bit and how important it is to hold the system accountable, right? There's many ways to do that, monitoring the district goals, making sure progress is being made. Um, you know, and, and that you're addressing your students' needs. Um, and looking at data and asking um, good questions around the data to, to figure out, you know, what are your students' um, needs. But you also hold each other accountable, your performance, and so we have a board self-evaluation. Um, but um, you know, making sure how, how do you assess your performance as a board? And I know there's a lot of new uh, board members here, so maybe not right now, but later on, after a year, right? Um, take that assessment to just kind of see where you all are at and kind of then create a professional development plan. And really that can guide you to maybe how you um, create your work sessions and kind of what topics um, your work sessions can entail.
Can I interject on that real quick?
Yeah.
Phil, have we ever done that?
No. And uh, we didn't, it, our wording is May, we talked about it in our uh, agenda meeting, but we didn't uh, do it. And part of the reason was because half the board was going off. And as we said before, this last year was kind of a triage year. And so, but, and what I was going to ask you, Janet, do you have a tool as far as helping boards with that self-evaluation piece?
Yes, we do. We do have a tool and it's actually based on these twelve standards, which is great that we're walking through them and understanding what they mean. Um, and so the board, it's anonymous, um, it's eighty-four questions. The board, each individual board member takes it on how they think the board is performing, not how you as an individual are performing.
Right.
Um, and then you get to see all of that data. We, we share with you the results of, of every question and how it kind of landed. And then we facilitate a discussion, because sometimes the data is, is skewed. Um, or um, you know, may not have captured things accurately. So we have that facilitated discussion to kind of talk about, okay, there's some areas here where there was a lot of disagreement. Or how come everybody agreed that we're performing really well, but there's maybe some outliers in one person or two people that said, no, we're performing poorly. So we have those kind of conversations and an open, honest conversation and we facilitate that.
So I, I'm kind of curious, Tom, have you guys done this in the past?
That's a great question.
In the last, you've been here for what, ten years or so?
Yeah, we've done it at least once. And I don't recall, but yeah, we, we have, we have done some of this.
Jan, just a follow-up question. So is that just of the boards or are there other folks like the superintendent, maybe the district office staff that provide input? Or is it just the board itself?
Currently, it's just the board. Um, we are, we have heard the same kind of input and so um, we're, we're looking into, into that. But we ha- we have not um, fully dived into that yet, but right now, we just offer it for the board. Yeah.
There's definitely some diff- different management philosophy on if you involve different levels into the evaluation. So whether it is the staff evaluating the superintendent, whatever, there's a lot of, again, I go back, there's a lot of slippery slope in there.
Absolutely.
Where there can be some underlying frustration unrelated to the actual performance.
Yes.
And it actually is an exercise that will create more frustration from people that feel they have not been heard. Because you give them a chance to voice it, and if you don't listen to what they have to say, then they feel more frustrated. So.
Yeah. Yeah, the data can definitely be biased. And so we're aware of that too. So yes, this is just the board, um, but during that work session, we do ask the superintendent to be there to engage in, in some of those conversations that, that are had. Um, really focusing on what were the areas of growth and what were the areas of strength. You still want to maintain those strengths. Um, and what's great about our tool, without me sounding very pitchy here, but what's great about our tool is that um, if you take it again, we will show you the results year by year. So that you can compare and, and see and hopefully see that you're improving and if not, have a conversation about that.
Now, is there an extra charge for this or is this part of our fees?
It's a separate service. Yeah. Yeah. But it's a flat rate. Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, I mean, beating a dead horse.
No, you're good.
So the superintendent evaluation, I thought, that was a, a rubric that was kind of free, that was provided through OSBA, is that true?
There is a rubric, yes, our superintendent evaluation workbook that we co-develop with the.
And is there not a rubric for uh, board members for evaluation? Because you mentioned, I think, eighty-four questions.
There's eighty-four questions and then it's a rating scale of um, it's not a, a one through four, but it's a, it's a specific rating scale. Like um, I don't know, uh, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a rating scale.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's why we have that facilitated discussion, because sometimes, especially new board members, will sometimes rate, I don't know. Or even experienced board members will rate, I don't know, and just be like, I didn't know what that question meant, Janet. Or I interpreted it this way versus that way. And so that's why um, we facilitate a discussion as well, not just send you the results.
And then when do you typically perform that evaluation?
It varies. Some boards um, will do them during board retreats. Um, some boards will do them every year. It just kind of depends on the needs of the board. Yep.
I would do it the same time we do the superintendent.
That's what kind of I was thinking, but.
Seems fair. We're going to judge her, we should judge ourselves.
Not to take away from uh, what you were saying, but there might be a, a blind spot. So I was curious about, you know, getting feedback. Obviously, it comes around during reelection time, but there's always a disconnect.
I think that should be done every year. I think, and I don't like the word judgment, but more evaluation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right? And so, you know, we should have, you know, some key indicators that we have to meet ourselves as well as staff and, and evaluate our performance in relationship to the key performance indicator in relationship to the goals and to the two-year plan or the four-year plan. And are we doing what we're supposed to do?
Yeah.
And hold ourselves accountable.
Years ago, we did it approximately the same timeframe.
And we should let the superintendent also evaluate us.
Yes.
That's really important, actually.
Yeah, I try to give like feedback now and then. I mean, if I, you know, if I think you're out of your lane or whatever, I'd be like, hello, you're a little bit off course.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But I mean, like, just a, a formal evaluation. So we get a more uh, uh, a structure, but also kind of a little elevated view.
Yeah.
And, and a independent view of someone who has watched us from the other side, right?
Yeah, and has a lot of experience with different boards. I mean, this is a high-functioning board. Um, and uh, able to have really collaborative uh, discussions and do not always agree on things, but come to a consensus. And I, I think this is a high-functioning board, uh, in my opinion, has been over the last year. And uh, but I think having the evaluation piece is good for everybody, right? Like, I, I learn things from my evaluation and I can always do better and that's how, that, you know, being self-reflective is smart.
Yeah. We call that continuous improvement.
Yep.
Everybody can continuous improve, myself included as a trainer. Like, I'm consistently improving these slides. I feel so bad for those who took my training in twenty twenty. Uh, we have completely changed, we're more interactive. In the past, it was very presentational, so. Uh, continuous improvement for all and for you all as well. Um, we don't have anything where the, the superintendent evaluates the, the board, um, but that's a really good point.
But it can be really simple, like start, start, stop and continue.
Hmm.
It doesn't have to be real in-depth.
Well, also during though, I will say, the board self-evaluation and that facilitated discussion, that's why we do ask the superintendent to chime in. That is the opportunity for the superintendent to be like, well, this is why, like, this is happening or this is what maybe I would encourage. Or, you know, it really does identify specific areas where there needs to be a larger conversation um, around X, Y and Z. And how to improve. Great questions, y'all. Um, so I was going to pause after every four, but you can absolutely chime in, especially as, in, you know, in real time as I'm introducing these standards, questions um, pop out. But is there anything else um, that needs clarification around those four standards or anything resonating with any of you?
The resonating thing is just the self-evaluation, I think, is super important.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I feel like if we have been doing that, it's a good checks and bounce, but it's also a reminder of like, oh, yeah, we should probably be looking, paying attention or self-reflection is a very humbling thing and a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody else? All right. Um, so it is seven thirty, so we've been here now for, oh wait, no, we started at six thirty. I'll keep going. I like to take breaks around an hour to an hour and a half, because it's important to stretch um, and, and kind of take care of ourselves. So I'll uh, stop at eight P M. if we need a break. Sound good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay, so the next set of four standards, so again, there's a total of twelve. Um, is around using data for continuous improvement. Um, and this, you know, I talked about uh, a monitoring plan, or you heard me say that when you're um, creating that strategic when the strategic plan is done, um, we encourage boards to, and the district goals are done to um, together with the superintendent, decide kind of what data to uh, measure throughout the year. It's not, you might get updates, of course, on the strategic plan, but there's a lot of um, smart goals and a lot of strategies in the strategic plan. We really want the board to focus on, okay, what is one area in that district goal? Um, or piece of information or data that we can monitor to help us track progress, to know. And kind of what, what format should that data be in? And really setting some expectations around what the board wants to see in terms of progress to your superintendent. So then the superintendent has time to go back to her team, get that information. And we encourage that they um, the information be shared quarterly, throughout the year at a minimum. Um, but again, really depends when the data is available. So having all of that, um, all those, asking all those questions and getting all of that information um, decided early on. And that's why we have our monitoring plan um, template, which I will share with you, um, the resource, Kim. Um, is a great way for just the board to kind of, once the strategic plan is done and adopted, um, focusing on, okay, during our meetings, you know, what reports are we going to be receiving, what format, again? Uh, because oftentimes, what I see, um, and I don't know um, here, but oftentimes, what I see is that there's a ton of reports being given during your meetings, a lot of information. And so we really want to make sure, again, how does that information that you're receiving, whether it's data, reports about the district, tie to the direction you set, tie to those district goals, tie to ensuring that you are informed, right? That staying in that balanced governance and being in that informed oversight. So I hope you're starting to kind of connect the dots here and really how um, understanding how to use data um, is, is really, really important. And we do have trainings on using data um, to measure student success. I did that training with a couple of boards, um, at our conferences, we offer it as well. Um, because data is great, um, but the numbers sometimes don't, don't tell that story. And so it's important whoever's sharing, giving those reports, whether it's the superintendent or district staff or cabinet staff, um, are able to kind of share with you, um, you know, the gaps, um, that's showing up, why uh, the data is the way it is, right? Culture responsiveness, um, this is really important too, as you're looking at policies. I kind of bring this back to the beginning when I talked about um, the belief, right? It's really important that board members believe that all students can and will learn. Um, it's um, you know, understanding the many uh, areas, you know, and diversity of your students. You know, race, gender, even the geographic, socioeconomic status. Um, that's really putting that lens of, of applying, you know, how is this impacting all of your students? And that's why it's really important, like I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, for you to really know who your students are, see data. So it's not just numbers again, but really starting to connect the dots and asking questions of why is this subgroup of students not performing well? Why is this group of students maybe not attending X, Y and Z? And, and coming to understand what those barriers are. That, that is really um, reducing and eliminating barriers, as it says here in the culturally responsiveness uh, standard. Culture and climate, I'm not going to talk too much about it because we spent quite a bit of time around culture and climate. But again, it's uh, creating that positive climate and culture, creating clear expectations, communicating, asking questions. Um, making sure you have, um, you feel that you are getting the information you need to stay informed. And superintendent, that you're giving that information as, uh, before the board is asking for it. Um, but again, making sure that your expectations are clear and that you're modeling those respectful relationships, having mutual respect. Even if you agree to disagree, healthy debates are good, even conflict is good, it's how you manage the conflict, okay? Conflict, sorry, is not always bad, but how you manage it is sometimes how it can look, um, it can, it can uh, snowball into something bigger and into an issue. And then learning organization, um, another great analogy for this is um, L P C, learning professional communities in school districts, right? Spending time like you are right now, um, to continue to learn, um, to focus on key areas. So I meant, I put it on the parking lot, board self-evaluation, maybe you carve out time to really talk about that, to talk about the superintendent evaluation. Those are all really key things in how you can continue to learn as, as, as a, as a board and continue to improve so that you're an effective, high-functioning board. And maintain, uh, because as, as Kim said, you are a high-functioning board, so we want to maintain that. Any questions around those areas? Any clarification? Anything resonating with y'all?
Oh, one thing that resonated with me is, is quite honestly, a lot of those pieces are being done uh, this, this past year especially, not, not going to go further back than that. But this past year, we're getting those pieces of information. And we're uh, we're, we're not, I personally don't feel we're lacking for getting information from our administration and keeping us informed.
Right.
And which is good.
Anyone else?
I, I have to say, I, I really feel that we're given an opportunity here to start with a clean slate. I, I really do. We have, we have some solid new staff that has been uh, instated. And we have really, I admire the three board members that came into this crazy situation that you guys were given, what, just a few months after you started, right? And, and, and then we have, and the new people, we have experienced educator, we have an experienced board member from the past. I come with my own little set of, of experience. And, and we have a board member that has survived all this and can speak, right? Of, of, of what he thinks was done right, what he thinks was done wrong. And that's also very valuable.
Absolutely.
And, and, and I, it's kind of better, in a sense, for us to start like this. And then we can build it like, like we see it and like, for the best, than trying to, you know, the, the, the barrier was blasted. So Miles Wells, sometimes you have a house and it's more costly to renovate it than to just put it down and start new, okay? And I think, I'm excited about this. I think this is the time for us to build a new house. And, and we're given a great opportunity. I just want to say that. I'm just.
I think that's great.
I'm stoked. I may not look like it, but I'm stoked.
Yeah, and that, and you're starting right with understanding your roles and responsibilities. And again, um, you may not remember all of this, I'm going to share the slides. But as you start going through, especially new board members, your journey, or all of you, right? Because like you said, it's a new opportunity here, um, putting these things into practice, right? And, and, and calling us too, if you have any questions, we're here for you too. Because you won't um, start to apply this until you start to, to be able to um, put it into practice in real time, right? And continue to learn, right? And grow together and um, help each other out when there are some tough moments potentially down the road. Thank you. All right. Um, so this next set of um, standards, um, so we have systems thinking. So this is a kind of how are you as a board staying informed, not only about what's happening at the district, but at the state, at the national level, right? It, it is important for you to know kind of um, what's happening. Uh, we do have an advocacy team, um, we, who puts on legislative roadshows regionally. So I encourage you to go to those to stay up to date on what's happening at the state, um, and at the federal level. Um, and it's just, those regional uh, meetings are great and we have regional reps as well. I'll show you that map later today, um, when we get to resources. Um, but it is important for you to remember and kind of the, the big systems thinking, right? Especially when you're making decisions as well. Um, innovation and creativity, that's really around um, uh, problem solving creatively. And oftentimes. And oftentimes, boards are going to have to do that. And sometimes you don't have um the time to discuss or go into full deliberations uh during your board meetings. And that's again, a reminder, you can, you don't always have to jam pack your board meetings, uh, your business board meetings. You can set aside special meetings and have a work session to really dive deeper into a specific area, like the strategic planning process, like the superintendent evaluation, whatever that may be, so that you can really um dive deeper. Uh, I don't want you to feel, and sometimes boards feel like it can be rushed, or there's never opportunity to really have deeper um discussions around things. So you can sometimes for, for, for some of those um topics, set aside those work sessions. Do not forget about those work sessions.
So, trying to be very careful here. OS B A, you said there was an advocacy portion to it. And I have sent you guys an email in the past. Because you guys are supposed to try to do your best to represent the entire state. The values of certain communities are different from place to place. And some of the language I see in coming to your emails, we are non-affiliated, non-partisan members up here. And we should be. And like our superintendent says, we got to live in the middle. And sometimes some of the policies you guys are advocating for make it very difficult for us to be in the middle. And you put us in very difficult situations. And I just want you guys to be aware of that. It's been very hard up here sometimes to just try to see things from both sides. I think sometimes the OS B A has a tendency of choosing a side. I just want you guys to be aware of that.
Yeah, I appreciate that and um can share that, can share that feedback. Um, and, and we do, you know, we're a neutral party. We try to, we stay a neutral party, um, nonpartisan, like you said, as well. Um, and so if that's not coming through, I will, I will share that information to our communications. Um, I'm not on that department or the advocacy, the legislative or government relations, it's now called, and communications department. So I can absolutely share that feedback.
Silver Falls School District is very interesting. We are very purple. And I didn't really realize this till I left and went over to like Idaho and came back, and I really realized how purple we were. And for me, being more on, probably on a conservative side, a lot of governance, really has to check in my, my, myself a lot of times to make sure that where I'm seeing things from both sides of the table. So that's, like Silver Falls School District, we find ourselves in the middle of this quite often. So I know that probably uh Oregon, you know, leans a certain direction, but I see probably in other school districts who are more conservative. You might have heard this before, so anyways, I really appreciate it to let me just kind of share that with you.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for sharing that. And I'll say for me personally, um, not speaking here as an OS B A staff, I'm on the side of students. What's right for our students, what do our students need, right? Um, for me, I, I'm, you know, want to stay nonpartisan, but I always come back to what's good for our students. But I will share your, your, your feedback. I appreciate that. Thanks, Josh. Anything else around innovation career TV? I'll keep going. Okay, so the next one, board members conduct ethics in relationship with the superintendent. This to me is like a core standard. I mean, these, all these standards, and you probably have noticed, start to kind of overlap. They're all equally important. Um, but this is really roles and responsibilities, understanding your roles around governance and management. I know I keep saying that, but I hope that you really um retain that piece of information and remember that you're that governance and the superintendent is that management role.
So are we going to go into more specific where the red, the yellow line is?
Yes, with scenarios. Yeah, well, I hope, that's the intent with the scenarios and putting into practice. You're kind of getting an overview, and then we're going to dive deep into how this may show up. Yes, absolutely. That's coming, probably after the break. Um, and so again, this is around understand your roles and responsibilities, the role of the board, the role of the superintendent, how you work together to make decisions um and stay informed. Uh, budget and financial accountability, this is a really um important role too. I'm not going to go into, into a deep dive of financial uh budgets right now. But what I will say, when it comes to the board, your role is not to look at every single line item. However, you should be able, again, comes back to that setting the direction of the district and connecting the dots. That's your guidance there, right? Whatever the district goals are, how is that showing up in the budget? Where are the allocation and the resources showing up tied to those district goals, tied to um, you know, whatever data or information you want to see progress on. So what I've seen some um districts do that I think is a really great um way to kind of highlight in the budget, um, where that shows up. So that way you don't go to every single line item, but you can highlight, or the budget officer can highlight, like, okay, here is where it's tied to the district goals. Also, um, the budget narrative that gets read is where that should also be um, be identified in terms of, of what your governance role is when it comes to the budget.
This will be interesting, because obviously in the past, there's been some issues with that in our district, right? And maybe there should have been some line by line supervision.
That is, yes, um, that is true. Sometimes this can be an area where boards are like, oh, man, I should have been looking at line by line item. Best practices not to do that, but again, asking those questions around allocation of, of those resources. And maybe even doing a training too on Budget One O One, which we do have webinars on that, and those are all free. Also, sometimes I encourage your budget officer doing a training with the board. Um, and uh, some boards will even do quarterly kind of updates on, on the budget as well throughout the year.
I did, um, I did send our new board members today. I sent them our budget presentations that Tony and I presented at COSA uh that talked about kind of our journey. Um, that has a lot of information in it. And one thing I'll point out to you in that presentation is that there is a, there's a financial report from February of twenty twenty four, and then there's our new report. And if you look at those two reports side by side, there is a dramatic difference in the level of information that you have as board members. And I think that um, the, uh, the additional information that you received this year is probably at the, one of the highest levels in the state as far as what was shared with boards about what we're purchasing, what we're doing. Um, you know, what kind of contracts we're doing, like we, we have revised and rewritten and reviewed every single piece of uh, every document that impacts our budget, right down to lease amounts. And um, I mean, we found a lot of things and so that would help the budget. And so I think that you have a really great amount of information on the budget. And you have a really, uh, very competent new financial officer at the end there who would probably be happy to walk you through all the ins and outs of that.
Yeah, I think those of us that have been on the board have been very pleased this past year with what we're getting. And we're, and we feel like we have a pulse uh
Here, here.
On, on what it was. And, and I'm going to call it what it is. To meet your standard that you've got up there, that's what was being done a couple of years ago. It was an overview every quarter and it was bar graph. And it, it met the standard you have up there. And it left us completely in the dark. And so I
Yeah.
I really appreciate what we've got now. And it's not, you know, it's not down to the nat paperclip or anything like that. But we have a general, good general view
Yeah.
Of, of the whole process.
I think context and relationship is important because Kim and her team stepped in at a time and understood what we needed and what we were requiring as a board.
Yeah.
And I think we're probably a little bit more in the weeds, as Kim said, we're getting a higher level overview. But I think that's one, that's what the community like demanded and expected, because there was issues and then us as board members. Um, and so I think as that level of trust, I don't see us like going back to where we were at. But I think uh what it does provide us is insight to provide good guidance, to be able to explain to our community the, the relationships and maintain like, well, where are we at with the budget? Why are we um at forty-six percent and we're, you know, only a quarter through the year? We're able to have more informed, intelligent conversations. And if we do see issues, we can provide direction earlier on to like, okay, let's maybe close that lever of spending um and have the conversation. But I think that's all relationship and, and Kim and her team knowing where we're at. And so I don't think we're completely imbalanced, but we're probably just to the left a little bit of like micromanagement.
Gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's, I'm, I'm excited, I'm excited about the new tools we'll be able to have. The, 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 um, the new reports that we're getting. But it's always been a challenge for me for things like that to be. You'd have to be a forensic accountant to, to, to look at the stuff and see, and see the problems. You, you have to be better than the person doing the job to, to know that they're not doing it right. So that, that's, it's a real, that's a big challenge.
Yeah.
It just is a big challenge. And this, I would say that the board's fault over the years is that it was getting bad. It was just slowly, our, our reserve fund kept going down, 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 and we never, we never put the finger and said, get it up quicker, faster than we were. We were always like, well, next year. We, we, we just kept, we kept trusting. We just kept trusting too much.
Trusting, yeah.
So that's just, um.
So I, I, I did really enjoy the presentation today. Um, I, at one point, when it's a, a proper opportunity, I, I will ask to translate some of the uh, the terms into more uh regular English. And so that I can understand better and, and then I'll, I'll have some. But it was, it was good to have today.
Yeah.
Actually went through it in between patients and it was good.
Yeah, yeah, anytime, happy to meet with you. Well, I appreciate you all sharing that because um, going back to that balanced governance, based on your need, right? Which sometimes situations can change, um, you had to kind of figure out what that balance was, right? Not making sure that you're sharing everything, but enough to keep in that informed oversight to hold that system accountable. So I, I appreciate that. I'd be, I'd be curious to see that as well. So we can share it too with other boards who maybe feel like they're rubber stampers when they're uh looking at the budget and, and just trust, trust, right? Because we do say you got to trust, but you also do have to, um, you know, there's that accountability piece. And what does that look like still within your governance role? So thank you for sharing that. Okay. So I think we talked quite a bit, but is there anything that's resonating or any clarifica- oops, what happened? How do I go back?
Oh, he'll get you back. There you go.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. I probably pushed the wrong button.
You touched on uh systems thinking. You kind of had, you know, local, state, national perspective. I get the regular emails from OS B A kind of about what's going on in education. I think that's helpful. Was there anything more there? Like when I think of systems, I think of all, all of the different things, whether it's um the tech that we use, whether it's programs that we use. Is there anything in that systems that you're seeing districts implementing and increasing success, whether it's academic success, better financial management? Any, anything in that kind of category?
Yeah, for that um standard, it, it comes to also how you leverage partnerships, right? So leverage partnerships maybe with community businesses. Um, during that vision-directed planning is a great opportunity to leverage partnerships. So maybe nonprofits, maybe uh, you know, community-based organizations. Um, that's also your superintendent's probably leveraging partnerships too through, you know, COSA, through, um, you know, what you're hearing and how you're sharing things too that um, that you're receiving from, from like the state and other meetings that you attend. Maybe you attend council. I mean, I don't know. Exactly. So, so you can also uh kind of figure out uh how to leverage those partnerships um, and, and find ways um to, to incorporate that into like the strategic planning process, for example. Did that answer your question? Great. Anything else resonating or any clarification needed before we jump into scenarios? Okay, so let's take a little break and then we will practice, put things into practice and um see kind of what information you retained uh throughout the training. And, and we'll continue to um have discussions around your role. So let's come back at, do you need five to seven minutes? All right, thank you all. I'm glad we took a little break. It's important to stretch and take care of ourselves. Um, all right, so now we're going to put things into practice. So um hopefully, you know, you picked up on a few things. Um, and so this is just a great way to, again, kind of um walk you through some scenarios. Usually this is the part of the training where a lot of board members find enjoyable. So hopefully that's the same for y'all. So I'm going to get us started here. So during a recent board meeting, a board member rejected the proposed vision, vision statement. We succeed when students thrive, all means all. They indicated that it was impossible for each student to achieve at a high level. Many students do not have the support at home necessary for them to be successful, said the board member. This is an impossible goal and should not be approved by the board. All right, so what are your thoughts? I'm going to ask new board members to chime in first. Um, again, uh, you know, as you feel comfortable, but I think this is just a great way to learn together, grow um together. So um I'm going to ask new board members to, to chime in first. What are your thoughts around this scenario?
This makes my teacher heart really unhappy. This is really sad. Our students will be what we, we project them to be. So if we do not project them to thrive, then they're not going to thrive. So if we set the goal that they will thrive, then they will rise to that and they will thrive.
What else? Anybody else, anything to add to what Sarah just shared?
Well, I think that that's a very limited uh statement in a conversation, and we don't have the context of it. So, but definitely if I start with just that, I would definitely push this board member to give more reasons or background and elaborate on why he disagreed with this statement. And maybe how we could, he would suggest we improve this statement and make it more realistic to his view. And then process that for the discussion so we can continue on towards an agreement on it. And, and, and he may disagree at the end, but you have to allow this board member to some extent to express his disagreement. But mandate that he explains why, and then you can continue on.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I think we need to set some high expectations for our students. This is his opinion. Years ago, we had a, had a goal of a hundred percent people, of students graduate. When that was brought to us, I thought, wow, that, that's not going to happen. But we set the, we set the goal, we actually came really close. But if you don't, if you don't set the bar high, you're never going to achieve anything.
Absolutely.
But, but, but this, in this scenario, this board member needs to explain himself and support the final, final vote.
So I'll be the opposite. It's interesting to me because we say Silver Falls School District where every student thrives, except for six percent. So I'm like the realist, so like it's one of those things, like I'm so literal, sometimes to a fault. Like all or none statements, I don't like them. Because it needs no leeway for like, what about, because it's, is it really true that every single student that we have thrive? That we let, didn't let every, any of them down, but also see the other side of like, we need to set goals. So I can see both sides of it.
Others?
Well, first of all, there wasn't a quantitative in what the vision statement was. It says, we see students thrive, all means all. So it means thriving can be different things to different stu- students.
Yeah.
And whereas I think too many would take that to mean all are going to get a hundred percent or whatever of something. And then saying it was impossible for each student to achieve at a high level, well, students can achieve at a higher level than where they are and, and growth and everything. And it was what that top state mean, was what it was mean. And it's not, it's not uh student-oriented when you start, you start playing the blame game then, you know? And we can't do that. We've got kids from all walks of life. We've got kids from all kinds of backgrounds. We've got, we've got issues with the state. We've got issues with the national government. We've got issues all over. Well, we can throw up our hands and say we can't do it because of those things. Or we buckle down and figure out what, how do we best get there with what we've got.
Yeah.
I think this is a trap scenario.
No, I think, no, I appreciate everybody, everybody chiming in. And you're absolutely right. And we say this because, I mean, even, it could mean any, something else, right? Like, I think here, that piece of like all means all and setting that high expectations, and like you said, Josh, right? Like this board member here is like, that's not realistic. Well, we, we don't want to set that. But what we say, and what I told you early on, is you do want to set those high expectations. You need to believe that all of your students, regardless of their backgrounds and like you said, Phil, regardless of what, what situations they have at home. Um, you, when they come to this, when they come to um Silver Falls School District, you are here for them. You are, you have those high expectations, hundred percent graduation. I love that you said that, because sometimes, again, is it realistic? Set that bar high. Let your students know that you believe in them, that you believe they can achieve higher. Because if you do that, the students will believe that. That is creating impact. I'm bringing it back now and applying it to what I taught you early on and what you said, Daniel, how are you going to put this into practice? This is how. When you have scenarios like this, or something else comes up where you're in disagreement, um, and it, and it's about your, it's about your students, right? So set those high expectations. That's the key thing here. And have those conversations in a mutual, respectful manner. Bring it back to the And have those conversations in a mutual respectful manner. Bring it back to the research, bring it back to the trainings. We need to set high expectations for our students. Because if we don't, who else is? Okay? Anything else superintendent? Did you want, or Kim? Do you prefer me calling Kim or?
You can call me Kim.
All right, so that's great. I like to ask.
Yeah, I think those are great comments.
Great. Thank you all. Okay, let's try another one. Oh, you know what? I forgot to pass this around. So let me pass this real quick.
No, this never happens.
KL.
Are you reading ahead? I'll read it out loud though.
No, there's no reading ahead. This is memorized.
You can read it ahead. Oh, yeah. Yeah, usually I hear chuckles. Um, during a recent board meeting, or sorry, an upset staff member who is also a parent, approaches you at the grocery store and asks if you can please help them with a complaint about their child's teacher. Their student's teacher has been assessing and grading them unfairly. And the staff member believes it is retaliation for a tough parent-teacher conference from earlier in the year. They mentioned they have tried connecting with the teacher and have been unsuccessful. And now they fear retaliation in their own job. What do you, as a board member, do in this situation? I'm gonna ask somebody else to start off. So Sarah, you chimed in first. I'm gonna ask a, maybe new board member, um, another one to chime in first here. What do you do?
You need to pick who.
You want me to pick who? Sure, Derek.
Uh, yeah, so this, we're, we're in a small community, so this happens a lot. Like everybody knows everyone. Everyone has either a student or a child in the district. And I do think it's important that we don't completely dismiss how they feel. Like that's really important that we handle that professionally and that we can say, hey, I'm sorry you're experiencing this, uh, and then we're gonna refer them back to our policy, which is generally gonna be start at the, uh, teacher level if they haven't already, but in this case they have, and then principal and work them through the process. And then also let them know that like, it's not our role as a board, board member to get into those employee, um, matters. And so, uh, again, this has happened multiple times in my short tenure. Um, and that's how, again, uh, we've been directed and stand within our policy to, to handle that. And again, if you handle it wrongly, because that parent's gonna talk to somebody else and talk to somebody else, it can really have a negative snowball effect.
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, one way or the other.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Derek. Um, any other board members have anything to add to what Derek shared?
No, I think that's the accurate way. You have, you have to, the community member, we represent them. So you have to make sure they feel heard.
Right.
Absolutely.
And that you empathize with their situation.
Yes.
Okay. But that you understand as a board member that there's a chain of command. And that, you know, that you encourage them to follow the chain of command. You can even encourage them to, hey, you know, keep me posted on the chain of command, just to make them feel better. Uh, I also think that we should then inform of that
Thank you.
report to the superintendent and say, hey, just wanted you to know, somebody approached me with that. This is how I handle the situation. And probably, you know, loop in and an email or whatever, also the chair of the board. Cause I think the chair should be the spokesperson of, of the board to start off with. So he should be always included in the communication. And, and then you just, you just let it go. But it's really important, Derek had a great point there.
Yeah.
You need to make them feel like you, you heard them.
I, I can think of one situation where I actually facilitated a meeting going up the chain of command, because they were afraid to. So basically took them by the hand and we went through this, through the process.
Yep.
Yeah, and a lot of times they just, they just wanna be heard.
Yeah.
And, you know, you kind of, you explain to them how, how it works. Have you, have you talked to, okay, you talked to, have you talked to the principal? Have you talked to superintendent? Okay, go do that, try that. And sometimes I've even, sometimes depending on the situation, I've actually called back a few months later and say, hey, how's, how things work out? Things generally take, things generally work out okay, but it always takes longer than anybody wants it to. Just because there's so much personnel stuff and humans, you know, emotional humans involved and adults. So it's, you just, you just listen, but don't, don't offer judgment. Just listen.
I said it earlier, but it is policy KL that I generally direct people to.
Yep, it's in your packet. Yep, I purposely put that in there. It's in the back. You have KL. Um, and then you have some AR, some administrative regulations attached to your KL. Yep. You're absolutely right, what you all said. Thank you for participating. Um, you know, you're not the first stop, right? And letting them know that, the chain of command, as you said, Daniel and Derek, yes, absolutely. Listen to them and, and be empathetic, as, as you said, Daniel. Um, that's what we say as well. And guiding them to that process, um, like all of you have mentioned. Um, guiding to the process, being very careful though to not say to file a complaint. And also I think, um, this, it does sometimes enter territory of legal nature. And so when it gets to that kind of area, your district legal counsel, sometimes they need to get advised or, um, you can contact our legal counsel as well. Um, but I, you know, just be very careful to not, when you're guiding the process, to not say to file a complaint. Um, and what somebody mentioned as well, I believe it was Daniel, looping in the superintendent, not assuming that the superintendent is aware of it. Um, that's, that's very key too, in maintaining that relationship with each other.
When you do that, I think it's key to let them know that you are.
Mm-hmm.
Cause, cause some people will be really offended and feel like they knew you have, uh, you, they lose your, your trust. Uh, and, and so if, uh, you're doing that, I, I believe you should tell the person, you know, I'm CCing Kim Kellison on this. So that she's aware of what's going on. In this particular scenario too, we kind of glossed over it, but this is, uh, where you've got a parent that's a staff member.
Mm-hmm.
That, that is really tricky. Uh, I mean, not that they aren't all tricky, but that one's gets real tricky.
Right.
And you, on it, whether it's a staff member or not, to be sure that you don't get into the weeds on what their problem is. I mean, there's listening and there's interactive digging.
Yes.
And you wanna make sure you're not a digger.
Yes.
And, uh, you're, that, that you're, that you're listening. And because especially if they haven't gone through the steps, there's a scenario where this could play out, where it's all in front of you, right? Here's the board before it's over. And you don't wanna taint that
Exactly.
before it gets there.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Very true.
Particularly to me where there's times where things will get brought to me and then an exec, you know, an executive session comes up, I'm like, oh crap, I'm gonna have to step out of this one, you know, just for, um, making sure, being above rapport and making sure that there's, you know, no, uh, conflicts of interest or just, um, liability issues to the school district. You know, it's tough because you think you can be, you know, you can be unbiased, but it's a perception that's, that's important too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I love what you said. Thank you, Josh, for sharing that and Phil, what you said, don't dig, right? If that's not your job to investigate when, when you're, just listen. And then, you know, as nicely and politely guide them to that process. Um, and like I said, this can sometimes enter the territory of legal, of a legal matter.
Sometimes all you can do is listen. I think Derek, Derek mentioned it, that some of these people come, come to you and, and, uh, they don't want you to talk to anybody. And they don't wanna talk to anybody. So what can I do but listen to you and sorry?
Uh-huh, yeah.
No, I've had cases similar to this where listen, said the directions they go, and that was the end of it.
Mm-hmm.
They just.
There are some, yeah.
Something, I, I guess, uh, through this process of learning too, is that, um, you can also, on the front and tell them like, hey, I serve two roles now and so depending what you tell me, like, maybe you don't, maybe I'm not the first stop. And trying to direct them before you get too far into the weeds. Cause sometimes you may not be digging and they just.
Yep.
Yeah, they give you information that now you're like, oh no.
Yeah. Especially if you've got a parent, staff member now.
Yeah, they put you in a situation, a tricky situation, right? Like, oh, I do not want this.
You're gonna have a tough one with this sometimes, you know, cause you know so many people and people are gonna come to you and you're like, oh.
It's a small town.
Yeah.
Yes.
And if somebody in this town does not know my wife, first of all, or myself, they're new. They haven't been playing any sports or have been involved in any community organization or anything. So I'm sure I'll hear plenty of it, but I am really good, really good at dancing. Trust me, I've done this for a long time now in other realm and, and I'm very good at dancing, so.
That's awesome. Well, thank you all. Again, um, so I'm here to facilitate, but you're also the, you're the experts in the room too. Like everything you shared in addition is so useful and helpful for your new colleagues, your new board members. Um, so thank you for expanding and sharing, um, you know, hey, this, this can happen, or hey, this has happened. Um, it is really important for you to know, so you're not caught off guard, right? That's what this training is for, so that you have those tools and those, um, you know, and you keep building your toolbox. Um, because sometimes it can look like this or it can be even more complex. And so it's important for you to really, um, look at those policies, read through them, understand them. Um, KL, it's in the back. And this is directly from, um, this is your policy. We host them. And I'll show you where I got them. So you can, um, if you are interested in looking at all the other policies, you are more than welcome to. And at a minimum, you should definitely look at section B.
And, and one thing, uh, maybe you're gonna have a scenario similar to this, but it probably would come closer to this. Those that are new to the board, uh, you will get emails about, you know,
Yes.
they don't like the size of the TV in their kid's room and send it right to the board and expect the board to do something about it. And yesterday wasn't soon enough. And so.
Yeah.
Do we, are you, do you talking about any of those scenarios going forward?
I can't remember if I have one particular on that, but what I will share with that is making sure you know your process, have your system set up. Sometimes, um, for those emails, it's, um, I don't know if you have something already in process for how to direct the emails, like forward them to the superintendent and copy the chair. What's currently your process when you receive information from constituents?
Officially have.
We don't have a formal one, uh, most often. I'll get, I'll get CC'd on it. If it, if it's come to the whole board, I let the person know that the whole board has received their email. If it's something I feel should be directed to somebody else, I'll advise them where they should seek their help. And that the board isn't it and appreciate their interest or care or whatever it may be.
Yep, yeah, cause sometimes it may not fall under the purview.
Up to each individual board member, especially when we went about last year, we were getting so many emails. And I felt it was important to try to respond individually to each one. But it's important to keep those responses individual, because if you create a chain, this is for like a reminder for the board, you can easily create a quorum. So when, if, if board members are replying on the same email chain, now we're violating public meeting law. So make sure that when you reply to people, if you wanna CC the board chair, go for it. Or Kim in your, or BCC, whatever you wanna do. But make sure that you're not attaching the rest of the board members in that, cause you can get ourselves, we can get ourselves into trouble.
Mm-hmm. That is correct.
Yeah, take a, take a second and look down there. What, what are you replying?
Yeah, some boards even have now disclaimers on the end of their emails too. I don't know if you all have that, but at some districts I've seen board members have like a little disclaimer about public and public records.
And most of our, we don't have that formally on ours, but most of us make a practice of if, if Phil Wiesener is talking to them, I'll say, hey, this is, I'm just one guy, this is my thought, not the board's.
Yes.
Right, yeah, yeah. Be very careful on how you respond. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Great.
Especially when you're in one of the leadership positions, cause then they think you're speaking for the whole board.
Yeah. And sometimes if you don't have a process and if you don't need it and everyone is following the same, and you're, you know, you're in agreement. But it, sometimes you do need it in an agreement. That's what a board operating agreement is for, is to put something like that into, um, a document. So everybody knows this is what we agreed as the process to follow. Um, again, only if you, if you need it.
Yeah.
Great.
We've been doing pretty good in that area.
Yes.
Yeah, great.
I've been doing great so far.
We'll see tomorrow.
And now you know, right? Like Janet said, we can put it into a board operating agreement, so we all follow the process. Yeah. Okay. Next scenario. And we kind of touched on this a little bit. I think Josh, you brought this up earlier, uh, but let's put it into practice. A board member.
Just stop right there.
I was gonna say, first sentence.
Are these real?
This one is, um, that's up for debate. Um, but yes, some of these I get chuckles because they are, yes, they have happened. Um, so a board member posts a question on Facebook asking for input on the math teacher's behavior. She states that her daughter is upset because of the way the teacher runs the classroom and wants to know if others are having the same concerns. She wants to know if others are, or sorry, she makes herself available for questions by text, email and social media. She goes to the superintendent and shows them the concerns, wanting something to change immediately. She also emails other board members for their input. She tells the superintendent that if they do not deal with this, she will bring it up at the next board meeting. A lot to unpack here. There's a lot to unpack here. Yes, yes. And again, I'm trying to show you, um, I don't want you to catch, uh, to be in these pitfalls, right? So I want, you know, to be proactive instead of reactive. That's my job, um, as your trainer tonight. So thoughts here. Let's hear from somebody.
Call the, call the district lawyer, whoever represents, and say, do you want us to get sued?
Well, let's, let's start here. Is anything going well here?
No, no.
Nothing.
Absolutely not.
So is this the role of the board?
No.
No.
Why? Elaborate more.
This is, this is the role of the superintendent and the administrators for a teacher evaluation.
This is a board member that thinks as an individual, they have power. As individuals, we're powerless when it comes to governing this district. As collectively, we have great power.
These are concerns that you go directly to the superintendent, say, hey, I just had, like, this is the respect. And even then, like, I don't even think you should even go to the principal. I mean, you can make, I don't know how Kim would want this handled, you know, but like doing this is a superintendent's nightmare.
It's a total personnel issue and it should not be on Facebook. That's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This person could go to the principal as a parent.
Yes. Yes.
Right, remove their board member hat. Or what if this is their personal, right? It didn't say that, right?
Even there, even there, that's, that's almost impossible.
Reading between the lines.
They're, they're pulling their weight. Yeah. They're not.
There's not a, there's not a principal in their right mind that doesn't see, you know, any of us walking in their office and not think, oh, boop, there is a board member in my office complaining about a teacher, right? You can't just separate yourself from that. And, and I think, I can tell you that at, at the next board meeting, it would start with an executive session involving the legal department. And there had to be a serious discussion with that board member about even, you know, staying on.
So I guess, yeah, I have a question. So obviously this is a toxic relationship here that they have set up. But legally, and obviously not legal, if they post this on their private Facebook, First Amendment rights, is there, there's probably very little recourse actually that can actually be taken. So one of the questions I had earlier that I didn't pose, but now I'm kind of thinking about as this pops up, are there any, are you seeing any policies that are providing guardrails for board members with regard to social media use? I know we have it for.
I believe there is a policy, especially one of the updated policies. I'd have to go back to see which code. Um, I can definitely give you that, but there is a policy, and I believe it's in here, BBAA, where it talks about, um,
You have BB.
You don't have authority as a board to speak on behalf of the board, uh, or sorry, you don't have the authority as an individual, right? You can't use your individual, um,
Right.
at, you know, power to, to get things done. Like you have to bring this up.
Well, okay, BBF twenty-one, when posting online or using social media, board members will treat and refer to other board members, staff, students with public with respect. You know, like, or, you know, staff or district business. I mean, this is twenty twenty-one on BBF, probably would cover this.
We had a situation about fourteen years ago, kind of like this, not exactly, but, um, we ended up censoring the board member publicly.
But also there, the part where she sends the email.
Yes.
Well, that's a meeting.
Yes, that's a serial meeting. Correct, yep.
And so you've got, you do have a policy problem there.
Mm-hmm, you do. Yeah, cause you can't, and, um, yep, you can't have, even if it's just one individual and then you talk to another individual and another individual, that's a serial meeting, correct. Yeah, great catch.
That last statement probably also violate the board superintendent operating agreement as well.
Mm-hmm.
You're literally giving an ultimatum and threatening them.
Yeah.
Well, we, and there's procedures for things getting on agendas and everything by policy.
Also no respect, right? Saying, deal with this. Look at all of this that's happening. Look at all the comments. I've collected my data, so to speak.
So how, how would you, as from OSBA, handle this? Is this the board chair's then role to kind of come up with a plan?
Um, so you can, so before, I heard censoring, definitely before you get to that level, there is ways to, um, you know, also handle it, start with the lowest level, right? Approaching, so the chair can talk to that individual. Um, include legal potentially, um, if, you know, for executive session, I heard that too. Be careful, make sure that it does, um, you know, that there is a statute that you can hold. There are reasons when you can and cannot hold, um, executive session. So just make sure that it does fall under one of those statutes. And if you need help, contacting your district council to help you kind of navigate that. Um, so yes, there's, um, there's a lot. So yes, there's, there's a lot here, like I said, to unpack. And like I mentioned earlier, you know, what we share is, you know, whether it's your personal social media, best to not, you know, put your board work on there. Like, don't, don't get, don't even try, don't even step into that and potentially cause this to happen, right? You want to avoid that. And by, by not posting on your social media, whether, again, it's right or wrong, you're perceived as a board member, whether this individual were to remove their board member hat and even say, hey, this is me as a parent. I mean, again, they can do that, right? You talked about first, you know, their rights, but we encourage, you know, to not do that, especially during these, that's what these trainings are for, is to share those best practices, so you don't catch yourself in a situation like this.
But then they're turning right around, and they've got their board member hat on, basically threatening the superintendent.
I, I think the behavior with the superintendent is a lot more egregious than the post. I agree the post is First Amendment and all that stuff. It's out of line.
Yes.
But the behavior with the superintendent, if they're actually.
That's out of line as well. Yes, that is absolutely.
This bad, I mean, that's, that's an issue.
Oh, for sure. That's not creating.
Deal with it at the lowest levels before you jump, you know, and see where it goes, and maybe a person can be reasoned with.
I'll, I'll use an example.
Now, the overall feel of this is this person is out of control.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'll share a personal story. I, there was something that me and Kim were talking about, and, and, and I included Phil in the email chain, and Phil thought I had, you know, overstepped my bounds. And Phil thought about it a long time. He sent me an email. And it was a very thoughtful email, and says, hey, I think you might have, you know, it was, it was a really nice email, and I took it with everything that he meant, and, and I meant no respect to anybody, and it ended up being a very great conversation. And so I felt like Phil had handled that excellently, and I hope I received it as well as he intentioned, so.
Impression I got.
Yeah, and that's, again, understanding, right? But here, absolutely, you're right. There are things that are, that shouldn't, that should, that should not happen.
But that's, that's why it's important, though, that we do deal with things, you know, whatever, at that lowest level first, and see, you know, and.
So in the center situation we had, we went through all those steps. We, we talked to them, we reasoned with them, it continued, so we ended up, we had to protect the board.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. If you follow all those steps, and then, yep, we just say, contact legal right before, yep. Great. Yeah. Sorry, y'all. So I mean, I share this just so you don't find yourself in this situation, and if you do, knock on wood, you know kind of how to, how to resolve it.
Packed a lot into that one paragraph. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, this one covers a lot of policies, a lot of, yes, you're welcome. That's why we share it. Like I said, usually these are the fun, these are the fun parts. Okay, so you heard, I heard, you heard me say something about executive session, so I may have just given you the answer already. So if the board held an executive session last week dealing with the student, this week at the post office, a community member approached you and asked you a specific question about something that was discussed in executive session, what do you do?
Shut your mouth.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Shut your mouth.
You just say, it was an executive session, we have no comment.
Yeah.
The end.
Yeah, it's a public, it's a, it's a private, sorry, meeting.
But if they're asking specific questions, someone has already talked.
Ooh, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's true, but that doesn't mean you should add to it.
Exactly. Don't dig, right? Don't go digging, like you said, though, right? Yeah, and don't make assumptions either, right? Don't be like, oh, I bet you I know who said it on the board, right? That's what you want to, mm, mm, stop, right?
So actually, that's a great catch, Sarah. So she just caught something. They're asked, so they had knowledge of something that was asked in that executive session. What do you then do?
Well, there's, there's, there's many times that, you know, a pub, public issue, like a superintendent's contract, we're going in to discuss it.
Right, the statute gets posted.
So people do know what the topic is.
Yeah, you know the topic.
So we're not, I'm thinking the most malicious, like somebody.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. Don't assume that intent, or, you know, who knows, right? You don't, and again, it's not your job to, to investigate that.
You just backed them.
Yeah.
Don't dig. I like what you said, Phil. What'd you say? Don't dig.
Don't dig, don't dig.
But yes, great catch, Sarah. That's correct. We purposely, yeah. But again, these are scenarios that, you know, we want to share with you, based on the many years' experience I have and what I've seen across the state.
This could have been a visitor that came to executive session as well, to give some input and testimony, and they could have spilled the beans.
Yeah, exactly. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. The key thing here, like you all said, right, and, and what you said, too, Sarah, thank you for pointing that out, is, you know, there are certain statutes and reasons when you can and cannot hold executive sessions, and here they are. Oops, sorry. I am not an attorney, so I can't interpret law, but you, you know, your district council or our, our legal services team can help with that. But these are the reasons when you can and cannot hold, hold executive session. You also have a policy on it. I think it's BCA is the code. Again, that's BCA. And then also, I encourage you, and actually now it's required, that you take the training on public meetings. And this is a required training approved by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, so we have the webinar available as, as members of OSBA, so you can watch it. It's fabulous. It talks about serial meetings. It talks about, it talks about a lot of things. I think this one's two hours long. So again, it's been approved by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, and board members need to take this training once per term.
And, oh, it's one per term, not once a year?
I believe it's once per term, yeah.
Oh, okay. That is cool.
Yeah.
One thing on executive session that I think is one of the easiest pitfalls being that a board has got to really watch, is to, your executive session, and you've gone in under one of the ORSs of the reason you're there and why you're doing it.
Yep.
And you get sidetracked onto something else.
Yeah.
It's not.
Correct.
And then you're, you're in violation.
You have to stay on topic, yes.
Violation at that point.
Yep, that's correct.
That's really easy to do.
And it's real easy to do, and quite honestly, I've been around boards that look the other way and just take advantage of it. And so, but it's gotta be, gotta stay on track.
You do. And this training covers all of that. Yep, absolutely. Yep, stay on that topic. Yep. Okay. I did not include BCA in there, but I will show you where all the policies are posted. If you were trying to look for it, I did not include it into this packet. My apologies. I saw you look, and I was like, oh. Okay, here's another one. All right. During a recent presentation by the superintendent, a board member questioned the lack of detail in the disaggregated student results for each school district goal. While the data provides a good global view of student success in the school, the board member wanted to see the data broken down by individual classrooms in each school, so they can judge individual teacher effectiveness. Is this, oops, is this board work? Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs in the middle, I'm not sure.
If I gotta make a decision, no.
Maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, again, this is really short, and you gotta give the environmental circumstances. One of us would like to see that. I think we can discuss this as a board, and then decide as a board if we feel that's a directive that should be given or not.
What else?
Well, I think, because it's carried so far, is wanting data broke down to the individual classroom, to, they're, they're getting into evaluation of staff, is what they're wanting to do. I have a little problem with, there's nothing wrong with asking for some clarification on some data, and ask, but it's an asking sort of thing, you know? I'll ask him, is this available? Can we have it? You know, but, but when you cross this line, that is fine tuning, where you're zeroing in on individuals, that's a, that's a whole different ballgame. That's not seeing the welfare of the kids in our district pens.
Yep. And in small districts, you have to be careful with that, too, because that can reveal, yeah, so you have to be very careful.
Yeah, we say we want just, well, we just want all the third graders. Well, a couple of our schools, that could be three or four different teachers, but at another school or two, it's right there. That's who it is.
Yep.
So I have a couple ways of viewing this one. So first thing I see is like, almost would appear to be like, almost ambushing the superintendent with a question that they weren't prepared for, which I feel can be unfair. I feel like our, we have been doing a better job from the district office, giving us documents sooner to review, and if you've got those questions ahead of time.
Yes.
You know, maybe send him an email that you might be asking this. This one, I agree with Phil, this would be probably crossing the line to individual evaluation, but I am kind of probably a data junkie, and I do ask for stuff, but I, I would, you always have to do it in a respectful way, and know that they put a lot of work into that meeting and that presentation, and to like, lambast them like that would be, in my opinion, probably pretty inappropriate.
What else?
Yeah, I've done that in the past. Warren Superintendent, I'm gonna ask this question. Can you be ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And we say the same thing, right? You know, don't catch your superintendent off guard, or the staff, too. Sometimes the staff can be like, oh, they're, you know, catch them off guard, if they're the ones sharing the presentation. So we also do suggest as best practice, you know, reading the materials, getting those materials in advance. As I mentioned earlier, right, that's why it's important to, to set up kind of expectations early on of like, okay, this is the data we want to see progress on, this is when we're gonna see it, this is what we expect, kind of giving you some direction, right, Kim, on kind of the board telling you what they want to see, so then you can go back to your team. And then also kind of come back to the board and be like, okay, this is what we're, I'm gonna share, or, you know, so and so's gonna share, and this is when the data will be available. Making sure that you're keeping each other informed, so then, you know, when the presentation is happening, not to say you can't ask questions, you absolutely should ask questions, the board, but, you know, if there's questions in advance and doing your homework and reading the packets, you know, do that as well. Don't catch the superintendent off guard.
Right, right, because if you, you want to give the superintendent or the staff, you know, hey, I want to explore this line of thinking, you know, and have them be prepared for it, so they can give a good answer in public for everybody to hear. It's about, you know, it's not about playing gotcha.
Exactly.
I've seen some of them where it almost sounds like an interrogation.
Yeah.
And that's not fun.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the point for me that kind of puts it back into the lane of management, superintendents, is what's being done with the information, so, so they can judge individual teacher effectiveness, not our role. We might, again, want the information for like a global perspective, but here it says to evaluate the teachers, that's not our role.
Right, correct, yeah. Great catch. And I love that you applied it into the governance role, right? Yes, you can look at high-level data, but once you get into that specific and the reason why, right, that's the key piece here, is like, we want it broken down, which sometimes you do, need it broken down by classrooms and broken down by subgroups, like, you are gonna do that. But it's the, it's the piece of like, why you want it broken down, is not because you're interested in knowing X, Y, and Z, how this is impacting students, but you want to check for individual. That's what we call kind of a personal agenda member. I showed that at the beginning, where maybe that's, and that is not your role, right? And I don't know, in this scenario, right? There could be a lot of different reasons.
I think if you finish that scenario after any school, then it has a different meaning and a different reaction.
Right.
And if you add, so they can judge individual teachers.
Exactly, yep. Or so they can see how teachers are performing, right? You can change whatever you want to change it, correct. Yeah. Anything else around this? Is that, is that kind of how you would want this to be handled, like what the board is saying?
Yeah, I think it's, I think that's accurate. I will say that, as a director of teaching and learning, that that, that data specific to a teacher's classroom is like, that's even hard to talk about with teachers in a PLC sometimes. It's really delicate, sensitive information, and, you know, it's, there's a lot of factors in that. It's not just simply teacher effectiveness. You could have a really difficult class. You could have a larger class than, you know, I mean, there's, there's other, there's other factors beyond just teacher effectiveness, and I think it's important. That's where we come into play, right, and the building principle, because we, you, you can't base your assessment on this limited amount of knowledge that you have. It takes, it takes a more comprehensive picture.
Yep.
There's also collective bargaining agreements. And especially in the teachers' area, a lot of collective bargaining agreements have specific provisions regarding how data is utilized in making, well, what comes down to, like in this case, judgments about a teacher. Doesn't matter what your intent is, but the law or the, the language of the bargaining agreement will say certain provisions and how you use data when you're talking about working with that teacher. And if there's a complaint, even a lot of times, there's a specific process about how you involve the teacher and their rep and whatnot. So it's always best to check with the superintendent's office, so we can help guide you, because some of them become sticky wickets.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and I think it's also important to note that, like, if, if we had a, if we had a teacher that was, well, we had a teacher like this in Winston, who like 95% of her kindergarten kids were on benchmark at the end of the year or higher, like, they were all blue and green on star, which is unbelievable. Now, I might take some of you to go see that. I mean, that, you know, the highlighting that really exceptional work, and then, you know, if we have a teacher that is struggling a little bit, you know, we have to figure out what the barriers are, what they need. Do they need professional development? I think, you know, you're looking at it as, and it's a holistic approach, where you're trying to make your instruction as engaging as impossible, as possible, and make your instructors as effective as possible, which is why I've spent all day today trying to line up professional development for teachers in the fall. So I think that, you know, when you talk about, this is like a really, that's like a really limited scope, and that's a really complicated question.
It's another trap question.
Yeah, it's totally trapped.
No, you're modeling exactly, no, no, but I want you to realize, you're modeling exactly what should happen, right? Have this conversation here, not when that district staff person or even your superintendent is presenting, right? So again.
This seems to be making the perception anyway that everything else is equal, other than the teacher, and there's other, other things out there. And they really should be looking at, at individual student growth, not.
Right.
If they're going, if they're going down this path.
And again, bringing this back to what I would encourage board members, if they were like, hey, I want to see a why, right? How is this applied to your governance role? How does this apply to the district goals? Which is your role to monitor and hold the system accountable? Is that, does it align with that? Ask yourself that question, too.
Yeah, definitely. If you, if you include individual teacher effectiveness in your question, you're so far behind, beyond that governance yellow line, that you can't even see it in the rearview mirror, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And so, yeah.
Yeah, great. Perfect. You're doing great with time. All right, this one. It is February, and the board is discussing the superintendent evaluation process. In the past, the board's process has been very informal with no adopted procedure. One board member would like staff to be surveyed, another suggests the current informal process works and is fair. Another board member suggests contacting OSBA for guidance. According to the superintendent's contract, the evaluation is due by March 15th. The superintendent has not been involved in this discussion thus far. What should the board do in this situation? Should they continue their process and meet the deadline, or table this for a different time? Does the board need to follow a certain procedure for superintendent evaluation?
Yes.
They need to agree on something.
Yeah, they need to actually have a discussion in an action item.
Maybe in October.
Obviously, that timetable.
Earlier than October.
And they probably pushed out the March 15th date.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
But this definitely would need to be on agenda. They actually need to discuss it and come to a decision as a board.
Right, you're coming across, and, and this does happen, usually around January, February, we sometimes do get districts, hey, I need help, and we're like, oh my gosh. And then we look at your policy, look at your contract, and of course, we help, but.
This, this came up for us.
In that particular scenario, right there, you're dealing with that scenario right there. Wouldn't you darn near have to come up with a MOU or something with the superintendent to push the date out past March 15th?
Correct.
To do anything that would be stand up.
Yeah, you would have to look at your contract and your policy, and then, yeah, potentially even get district legal.
Because you couldn't even begin to dot I's and cross K's on that.
Yeah, it kind of, it kind of, a lot of it depends on the contract. Does the contract specify how the evaluation was gonna be performed?
Exactly. And sometimes you need legal to help look at that, yeah, that contract.
You don't even know what you're evaluating it on.
Right.
Well, that's the other thing, too, yeah, right? As the superintendent, if this was the scenario, which it definitely was not with our board, we talked about this in like September. I mean, I would expect you to follow the old process, because you weren't organized enough to pull together a new process.
Yep.
Yeah.
And that's been your past practice.
Yep.
As a lawyer, I'll tell you that right now. I'd argue that here until tomorrow.
And I wouldn't sign, and I, just to be really transparent, I would never sign an MOU that says we're going past March 15th.
Oh, no, I'd say, but you'd, you'd have to do something, but.
You, well, you need, you have to meet the deadline for state law.
So getting into this situation, whose fault would this be?
Boards.
Boards.
Boards. Yeah, but the board is a, like, because typically, like, this is an interesting one. So, and this is something that we're not involved, so, I mean, I don't set the agenda. And by the way, obviously, Phil and Derek, you did a great job, because this wasn't us. But like, I mean, it's very interesting, it's being, the, being a regular. But like, I mean, it's very interesting, it's being, the, being a regular board member, what usually is popping up or scheduled is usually set between the board chair and the superintendent, correct?
But the board should be aware, right? You should know, and that's why these trainings and going to conferences, staying up to, it's also you as an individual board member have that responsibility.
To mention it.
To be informed, know your roles and responsibilities, yeah. It's definitely, the process is the board's, it needs to, but you need to make sure the superintendent is aware of the process and do it in an open session, yeah.
Yeah, this, this whole scenario is just a disaster, and I think,
Yeah.
it wouldn't be fair, whatever the process, and you'll go on to the legal point that Anthony mentioned, the past practice, whatever that would look like, superintendent doesn't know what they're being evaluated on, because you haven't discussed it months in advance, and so,
Yeah.
I just feel for whoever was actually in the situation, because this is actually based on reality, but just a really unfair position put your soup in.
And if you hadn't talked about this by like November, I'd have been like, hello?
Yeah, exactly.
You gotta figure out how to do this.
Yeah, cuz you need to do an evaluation every year, yeah.
It brings me to just a quick caveat question. So, in here, is there the board meeting agenda setting process where board members are given the opportunity to suggest a?
Yes, every month, we have.
I'm, I'm assuming so, but I didn't know if it was included in this.
Um, I might have included it under board procedures.
At the end of every regular board meeting, we include in the agenda, Phil will always ask.
Request something, and, and even beyond that, you can, you can request the chair or superintendent and ask about. Doesn't guarantee it's gonna be on.
I was just gonna say, it's important for the board to understand that it doesn't guarantee it'll be on the agenda.
I understand that.
And if you see that, it's, yeah, it's not in there.
Dates, dates, days ahead.
I think by policy, I think three, I think three board members can place something on the agenda.
Yeah, I think so, on the policy. But I will say sometimes that procedure, thanks for bringing that up, Daniel, can be more explicitly defined in a board operating agreement. That's another really great example of what can be in an operating agreement. You set expectations of what that process is for setting the agenda, and even adding information, like you said, Phil, just acknowledging too, and knowing that just cuz you request an agenda item doesn't mean it's gonna get placed on the agenda.
So, you guys have done such a great job, but I, I really am curious about the operational side of the board. Is there a calendar or something that triggers for us, like, hey, this needs to be done by a certain time? Like the superintendent's evaluation?
Yep.
Debbie, this Debbie that does it?
Track of an awful lot of that.
Okay, sweet, okay. That's very comfortable.
And actually, now we even have a wonderful resource aboard, for new board members, like onboarding, like even what you should be doing by quarters. I'm sure you've, you've received that as part of the administrative professionals group. So, we even have other resources like that, which includes also when you, when you should be aware of the superintendent evaluation process.
For agenda meetings, Debbie and I also review the previous year's, you know, agenda to see, you know, kind of what we covered.
And some boards have board activity calendars too. We have some templates. They need probably some revision, I'll be honest, but there are definitely some resources, yeah.
The OSBA and COSA's superintendent evaluation workbook has kind of a really good map, already mapped out, and so. It runs up in that hole.
I can share with you where all those resources are as well. Yeah, it's pretty, it's a really extensive booklet. We co-developed it with COSA. And so, if you have any questions, feel free, but I will share briefly. In this scenario, hopefully you don't ever find yourself in this situation. There is a lot that depends, right, on extending that deadline. Also, what if it's a contract renewal? What if it's not? So, again, it really depends on the contract, and maybe sometimes you will need to have legal review that contract. And, you know, is there a certain procedure? It's up for the board, right? You can use our tool that we co-developed with COSA or a different process, but you have to agree to that process and what tools. So, it brings me to, oh, do I not have it? I do. Tools for collaboration, I have it here, sorry, I'm gonna skip through. This is the superintendent evaluation workbook.
Yeah, we used this, this last term, and Derek did a great job.
Yep, it's a five-step process. We say start the process early, as early as, as when the evaluation cycle ends. So, with our workbook, we recommend by March fifteenth. That's for, you know, so that you can evaluate on a twelve-month period. And you have to adopt the evaluation process tool and timeline in an open session, together the board with the superintendent, whether that's our toolbook or some other process. In our five-step process, it's optional to set superintendent goals. If you do, you know, making sure how, usually those goals are developed based on the previous evaluation cycle, right? And so, and sometimes not, because again, this is optional for our five-step process. But I do encourage to, to have superintendent goals, but these are separate from district goals. This is not just copy and paste the district goals. These are tied to professional development. What is the superintendent doing to accomplish those goals? Targeted feedback survey is optional too, as part of this process. It's a way to get additional insight and information from key stakeholders, from the community and from staff members. And together with our help, we help you identify who those are and with the superintendent. We just strongly encourage, recommend, not even encourage, recommend that it's people who have worked closely with the superintendent can really speak to the performance and to the standards that get selected as part of that process. It's a whole separate service. I know we talked about data and how that can be biased, so we can talk more about that if, if that's something of, that you want more information on. We also encourage, once you have your process, your timeline, to have quarterly check-ins throughout that twelve-month period, so that there are no surprises, so that you are checking in on progress throughout. So then the evaluation is smooth. It should be a positive experience. There should be no surprises because you have been doing those quarterly check-ins with the superintendent. So, that's, that's the process we recommend. I know that's a lot. If you have any questions, please feel free to.
Don't have a question. I've got a comment.
Yeah.
Probably not gonna like it.
Uh-huh, sure.
It's a, it's a, it's a complaint I have about OSBA. And that is that all this involvement and everything with evaluation and stuff, but OSBA, which is an organization for school boards, will not offer legal help dealing with anything due to a superintendent, even as simple as a contract. And I think that's a travesty for the dues we pay.
I will reach out to our.
Oh, I did.
Okay. So, did they say to reach out to your district council first?
They didn't say first. They said they don't do it. And I was told the same thing at an OSBA convention.
Okay.
That's incredible.
No, I thought so too, and I think it's bull.
Okay, good for me. I will reach back and see what, if I'm missing something around that.
Yeah, they, they will not do, if, if I sent them
Not look at the.
Guidelines and wanted them to put together a contract for Kim with this information, they will not do it.
Okay.
It depends on the ESD.
Well, I know sometimes they'll say, reach out to your district council first.
No, they just.
But they didn't even say.
No, I've been told two different times. I was told when I was a new board member and went to the convention, it's to a meeting in front of all of us. And then this past year as board chair, I asked again. I was told the same thing.
I will get clarification on that.
Phil, when we were digging into the contract for like in-kind salaries and stuff, you, we had to do that?
OSBA helped with that.
Okay.
They helped with that. They helped with comparisons and all that, but as far as dealing with contracts, they would not.
Or super, or anything with superintendent vouch, or just the contract?
Just the contract.
Okay. I will get back to you on that and see what, if there's, I'm not an attorney. I don't work in that department, but I will see what.
Did you use the ESD, Phil?
Yeah.
That group. Okay, so when you use the ESD, I mean, the good news is that doesn't cost us.
Yeah, no, I, I, I had no problem with where we got our help. I have no problem with that.
It's the response.
I was, with the fees we pay for OSBA, and it's supposed to be for school boards, I do not see why, other than they don't want to get themselves in trouble with the superintendent anywhere, which, that's not their worry.
And they didn't tell you to go to district council either, okay. Thank you for sharing that. I will see if I'm missing some information.
What are the fees we pay?
What are our fees now for?
Oh, gosh, for OSBA.
There's a, there's a list that comes up.
No, but what is the?
Oh, the, depends on the services that we have.
Yeah, but it's.
It's kind of like the laundry list, what do we want to utilize.
Pretty good amount of chunk of change.
I mean, just the pay, just the pay liability insurance. It was like, Tom, like a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
The pay, yeah. Well, thank you for sharing feedback again. I don't work in the legal department.
Oh, I know, but you're here.
But, but I am here, correct?
And as many times as I heard check with legal, I, I was.
There's a scenario for you.
My blood pressure was, my blood pressure was rising all the time.
I appreciate that, because maybe I misspoke, right?
This is the most animated I've ever seen, Phil.
Because I do often hear, you know, go to district council, so I was like, oh, well, that's fair if they told you. But you're saying, no, they didn't even tell me to go to district council, so thank you for sharing. I will, yeah, this is great feedback. All right, um, let's talk about some tools for collaboration. So, I talked about the board self-evaluation, so I'm not gonna go over it again, but I just wanted to show you a snippet of what that looks like. So, this is what you would get. Again, it's based off the twelve standards that I just talked about, but it gives specific questions. There's a total of eighty-four, a set number for each standard, that you as a board member would respond to on how the board performs, not you as an individual. It is anonymous even for us collecting it. I, you have to self-identify with a number, whatever you want. So, we don't even know who, who's responding to, to the survey. It is one hundred percent anonymous. You then get the aggregated results, but then you also get every result for every individual question as well, to see how you as a board landed. And so, that's the, it's kind of, I think, a small print for y'all, but there it says not accomplish, or accomplished, effective, developing is the yellow, and then red, not, or ineffective, sorry. So, those are the rating scale. I know you had asked about that, so I just wanted to share a snippet of that. And this is a tool that we took from Tom Alsberry, that researcher on these twelve standards. What we like to do is create a professional development plan after the discussion, if you decide to use this service. Again, focusing on areas of growth and areas of strength, and kind of having that discussion around what are those areas and what can you do? What are some, you know, things you can put into practice to address those areas of growth? All right, we talked about the SUP eval and the five-step process. I talked about the board operating agreement. Here's a snippet of one. It's on our website. You can pull this resource. I encourage board operating agreements. I recommend it be one-pager, no more than two pages. You don't want it to be an overwhelming document. You know, the expectation isn't to memorize it, but something that, you know, you can reference often. Again, you do this together, the board and superintendent, the clear expectations around specific areas, and that can vary, right? I gave you some examples of maybe the process for how to get items onto the agenda. Maybe the process for, what was the other one I shared? Request maybe even for data, things like that, whatever it may be, that's what this tool is for. And you adopt it, and then it holds the weight of policy, and you all sign it. Here's another example of a one-pager. This one is great, because not only does it have the opportunity for the board to set some expectations of each other, but then the board sets clear expectations for the superintendent, and the superintendent sets clear expectations for the board. And we have a long list of samples that you can start to work off of, and usually it's like a forty-five-minute hour discussion that you can all do on your own. You don't have to have me come back, but we do, we can facilitate it as well. So, again, when you're, when you're looking at that operating agreement, maybe it's around your meetings, how can it be more effective, better organized? What is the board discussing that it shouldn't or should? Are there processes that need to be clarified and or possibly changed? So, it's kind of your opportunity to have all of those conversations around different areas, whether it's how to run your meetings, communications, et cetera. Questions about those tools for collaboration, the SUP eval, the board self-evaluation, and the board operating agreements?
Got a couple of thoughts I'll share on the board operating agreement. One thing I'm always concerned about is if we have questions about information that comes out, we direct that to different staff members, like, that should probably be going through our soup. And so, she can direct her staff and say, hey, Derek asked for this. It's nonsense. He's already talked to him. You don't need to do it.
You have a policy on that, BG.
And so, that part, and then, I think you mentioned about the board self-evaluation. I think it's probably a good exercise, there's probably some good information, but I just, I see like giant blind spots and not having other input. I could see it, maybe like, well, yeah, they, they give themselves like a B plus, and like, we rate them as a C minus or whatever. And so, I know, I would just ask in future conversations if OSBA could start looking at, how do we, how do we include other input than just the seven of us that probably have.
Kind of like with our eval, we have that targeted feedback survey for the superintendent. How can we maybe apply something similar to, to the board self-evaluation?
Yeah, I just think it would be very helpful more kind of three-sixty.
Appreciate the feedback, yeah. Yeah, we avoid, so, three-sixties is something that got replaced with targeted feedback survey to kind of help with the bias. Again, it's, it's, you agree to that list of who's gonna take that survey, and it's set on, and you also select the standards. So, it's not all the standards. It's only three that we recommend, where the boards may need additional insight into the performance of the superintendent. So, yeah, that's great, that's great feedback, thank you. Anything else around those tools? Okay. Well, I just want to wrap us up then with just some other additional resources and kind of show you, especially new board members, or experienced board members too, where you can find everything that I shared with you. And here's some additional information that you can take with you as well. I don't have copies for all of you, but if you want to pass it around, and then again, I'm gonna share with you where you can find them. So, I strongly encourage you to take a look at our website, you know, poke around at it, but specifically, so that's our website, osba.org. You can find all, all of our contact information, all the department, all the services that I showed you at the beginning. But really, I wanted to highlight the little person icon on the right-hand side there, my OSBA login. When you click on that, that's where you have access to your membership portal. How many of you have been inside that portal? Great, almost all of you.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No, you're good. So, each of you have a specific login. You have your password. Once you're in this portal, you have access to all the resources. A lot of it is also available on the website, but there's additional handbooks, one on executive session, for example, parliamentary procedure. There's a lot of information and resources, and where our webinars get hosted too, in your portal. And if you have any issues logging in, let me know, and I'll reach out or route you to our membership services team, who can help you identify why, why you can't access that. So, again, once you log in, here's some free member resources, right? Boardmanship, board chair guide, a lot of information. The superintendent evaluation workbook that we mentioned is in there as well. You probably get bombarded with a lot of our emails, news stories. This is a new thing, stories from schools. This is our community, our government relations and communications team is working on sharing a lot of positive stories. Jake, he's the one who writes a lot of the stories on that team. And then ORD News is essentially just like clips, so, of news, clips of different news, national, state, regional as well, so you can kind of see what's happening across the region and similar districts of your size, et cetera, just a great resource. This is just something that our team does too, the recognition of the school board member of the year, which gets recognized at our annual convention. Which brings me to conferences. I love when I have those segues. So, we have a lot of events. Our upcoming one is OSBA Summer Board Conference in Salem Convention Center. And then we, and that one's really going to be around a lot of professional development trainings by OSBA departments. And then annual convention is where we ask other board members and districts to share best practices. So, really around kind of those standards, but actually put things and share what they're doing, maybe around strategic planning process, for example, so you can see what other districts are doing. It's a really great opportunity to network and learn, again, more best practices from people across the state, from districts across the state. This is our summer board conference that's happening August eighth through tenth. Feel free to snapshot that QR code if you have any information about that. I'm sure Debbie, you have received all the information. Registration does close July eighteenth, but you can also register on site. And then policies. So, if you go to policy.osba.org, that is where you can find, we host your policies. And so, this is where you can find, you select, you'll see a whole list when you go to that website of a lot of districts that we host policies for. And you'll scroll down to the letter S for Silver Falls, and that's where you'll find all the policies. So, I would encourage you to check out the A and B section, and specifically all of the B-coded policies.
It's on the district website as well.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, yep. Just, I talked about the legislative roadshows or our regional meetings too. This is when they're occurring. Really important just again to know what's happening regionally. Also, understand, know who your, who the reps, who our board reps are in those regions, so this is great. So, you can, you know, if you want, reach out to them as well. That's just a snapshot of that, and it's, this is on our website as well.
And then, sorry, the regional meetings, no. And then, sorry, the regional meetings, no costs for those? Conferences, there's a registration fee, but the regional meetings?
I don't think so. I think you just have to register. I can't remember. I don't participate in those. That's our advocacy team. I believe that ESDs usually put them on.
Okay.
Not always, but you know, typically, yes, it will be held on ESD and then there's like a registration link. I don't know if there's a cost. I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
They included dinner last year.
Yeah, and we even provide, they even provide dinner. Yeah.
ESD sponsored it, didn't it?
Yeah, I don't think so. Great question, though. And then, yes, you know, look who are, who the reps are in your region. Great. And then this is my team. There's four of us and our director of board development. We all do trainings. We're board specialists. And then Reggie is our senior analyst. He usually sends the service agreements to Debbie. And this is just some of the services. And again, I have some flyers of all of that and kind of what we put on. I do want to highlight our Leadership Institute program. So by taking this training, it is a part of our bronze-level leadership courses. And so a lot of our trainings, whether at conferences or in person, you, it's an accredited program. And so there's a bronze, silver, and gold. I have a pamphlet about that as well. So you will get credit for this training. Also superintendent searches, help with charter school authorizations too, et cetera. All right, I know that was a lot of information. If you have any, if anything comes to mind, feel free to reach out to me. I'm here for you. Everyone at OSBA is. And if I don't have that answer and I know I've gotten some great feedback, I'm going to go back and share that feedback. Feel free to also reach out to info@osba.org and they can also route you to the department depending on the question. And there's our phone, our website, our social media. And with that, any new insights?
On a positive note, I did want to say Josh had brought up about our comparative passages for superintendent stuff. Vince did a fabulous job and helped us out a lot with that.
Great.
Did a super job on that.
With the superintendent evaluation process?
No.
Like the comps for the contract.
Oh, yes, yes.
Comparative comps.
Oh, yes. Yep, yeah. And Vince is the one who helps with our searches.
He was great to work with.
Oh, great. Yes.
You feeling bad about-
He also-
You feel bad about being like-
I don't want to take you all that, but the legality?
Vince, oh, yay, board development. Oh, so- Also Vince does, if you're not a part of the Board Chair Cafe, he does a quarterly, or a monthly, and for board chairs and vice chairs, it's a monthly just meeting that you can join and other board chairs and vice chairs, you just share openly, you know, best practices, concerns, issues. And Vince is in charge of that group. So if you want to sign up for that, let me know and I can share that information with Vince. So what will your board do next? I know I shared a lot of information, so what's next for your board? After this training?
What do you mean?
Yeah, what next?
We have other agenda items and, you know, we have a meeting in a few weeks.
Well, here I put a parking lot right there.
Well, we definitely, I know it's on our radar, the district goals. And do that and/or revamp strategic plans, but something along those lines.
I think we'd like to adopt the board self-evaluation at some point.
And I, yeah, I think we want to do something in that area. And I think we want to stay reminded, because I think we lose focus of this sometimes, of student focus. I mean, that seems like an obvious, but sometimes, I think sometimes we, that doesn't take a top priority over on some things that it should.
Right, it can delay the work, as I mentioned.
That's editorial comment on my part.
No worries. Thank you. So again, I'm just going to close off with your work impact students, right? We talked all about that. When board work looks like this, right?
We've seen that.
Or there's turbulence on the flight, like I mentioned. Just come back to this, like we were saying. That was such a beautiful segue into my slides. You know, come back to this. Come back to your students. All, every single student.
I think, yeah, I think as a board, I think we've done, I think we've done a great hire. I think she in turn has been involved in doing some great hires. And I think we've got a, we've had a, and I think we'll continue to be a focused board on what's important, keeping that ship sailing, going in the right direction and smoothly, hopefully.
I think this next year's going to be interesting to kind of let her be her. You know, she came in and, you know, was trying to pick up the pieces and I think she's building her team and kind of her vision. I'm very curious to see what that-
Do you feel that way?
Yeah, I think this year's going to be much different. I think I have a better handle on where we stand financially. And I think, well, while it's still challenging, it's not going to be easy. I think that it's time to start moving forward with strategic planning and initiatives and trying to prepare to pass a bond.
Future to pass.
Yeah, look forward and try to, you know, move this forward together.
Yep, yep.
Anything else? Any comments?
Yeah, I got a comment. Yeah, good, great presentation. You have, I've seen a few of these over the years and you have definitely improved. I mean, you, you, you drove. No, it's good.
That's what I said, I continued to improve.
Yeah, you did. No, it really has. This is great.
Oh, thank you.
No, I love the interaction and allowing us to be interaction. And I think it, to expand on things, and I think that's much more productive than a one-way.
Yeah, I think the scenarios are very important, just kind of giving us an opportunity to play them out before they actually happen. And avoid some of those, you know, trouble areas.
Put it in education speak, good growth, good student growth over the years.
Absolutely.
I think for me, the two things that are sticking out on the list here, you know, for the last year, we were really micro-focused on budget, which we'll still need to be, but now student-focused strategic plan and district goals, because I think that's the next phase. And so I'm excited with the board members stepping in to help us build that process. I think it's so important because I think when Kim took the key leadership role, there were so many holes in the dam, trying to fill them all at the same time. And now that most of the holes are patched up fairly well, I think-
Or at least know where they are.
At least know where they are. I think it's important for us to get zero focus on some things.
Totally.
All, you know, all efforts are pointed in the same direction.
And that's great. And also don't feel like you have to do so much. Like, I know sometimes boards will feel like, "Oh, we ought to do this, we ought to do that." Like, really space it out, right? That's why I was talking about those special meetings. Like, definitely utilize those. Carve those out. Look at your calendar, especially board chair and the superintendent who are, you know, creating the agenda, you know, looking at that and looking at ways so boards don't get to the point where they get overwhelmed. Because I have seen that, where sometimes it's like, "Oh, okay, we're going to do this, and we're going to do that, and we're going to do this, and we're going to do that." So like, space it out, right? Focus on those. I think that's great. I think focusing on those district goals is that next step where then all the other kind of pieces will fall into place. Yep. Great. If anybody else has any comments or questions, I think I'm going to wrap this up. We used almost the full three hours, which is what we say this training, especially with the interaction piece, can take the whole time. Well, thank you all for all the work you do for your students. I look forward to seeing and seeing how you maintain that high-functioning board and the work that you do for your students. This is in terms of feedback, which I know I've already received some, which I appreciate. We also at Board Development are trying something new. We would love for you to take a moment to fill out a survey. Here's the QR code. Snap it with your phones and provide feedback about the training so that I can continue to learn and improve, Tom. Please, I appreciate the feedback. Well, that is all I have for you all. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for accommodating our schedule and everything.
Of course. Absolutely. And here's some additional information about other services and then also Leadership Institute program.
Okay, thank you.
Almost done. Must be quick.
Mr. Chair. We are on discussion items.
Mr. Chair. Yes, before we proceed, I have a question of a newbie. So I've accumulated a list of questions here that I'm sure that most of them are silly questions. Who do I ask them to outside of this meeting? Do I address them directly to you? Or do I just set a meeting with?
Probably depending on if they're about the way we run things, I could help you. If it's about actual functions of district, Kim's your best bet.
I think there's a combination here.
And maybe, but both of us, we can chime in.
Okay.
Each one in our own lane.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's good. And I encourage any of you, you know, that is, that is good. That is good input because you come in and there's just little things sometimes as far as procedures and stuff like that. 95% curriculum donation. Kim, I assume you're our point person there?
I am, yeah. So we have been talking about reinforcing literacy K5 and really like shoring up that foundational piece of literacy. And 95% is a really commonly-used product in the state for grades three through five. So at the lower end, K2, that's more obvious. There's a lot of curriculum providers that provide foundational support at K2. Wonders, or not Wonders, sorry, that's what we have as our core product. But like Ufly, Ekri, Wilson Foundations. I mean, there's a bunch of different products, CKLA, that provide that K2 foundational support. So it's really easy to find products that fit that lower grade level. Grades three through five, where we have readers that still need additional support, that have not mastered those foundational pieces and are working on phonetics, phonemic awareness, and all those different phonological pieces. We feel that our curriculum needs some support. And so we worked on this all year with Sharon Hofer, with Northwest Regional ESD as part of the Oregon RTI grant. And so we did a ton of research and we only found a couple of products that we thought really fit this. It's kind of a niche. It's a small, it's a smaller niche. We could, of course, replace our entire curriculum product, which would cost $600,000 or $700,000. But we just adopted that recently and it just needs some supplement. And so I tried really hard to find other vendors that did this kind of work. And it was really difficult. It's kind of a strange area. It's not, it's not common to work on foundational systems in the 3-5 area, grades three through five. But our teachers really feel that this is important. And we talked about adopting Ufly K5 for foundational support. But Ufly doesn't really do a lot of work in grades three through five. So, you know, and we talked about doing 95% K through five, but 95% is much more expensive and the teachers are already using Ufly. This was like a whole thing. This was a long, long discussion. Took a lot of teacher input, a lot of administrator input. What we finally, the consensus we finally came to was that we would purchase Ufly manuals and decodables for the K2 piece because that made the most sense. It's financially, it's really affordable. Ufly is, it's extremely inexpensive. It's $70 for a manual per teacher and then there's some classroom decodables. So the whole, that whole purchase in the K2 region is only about $20,000, $25,000 tops to support all our readers in that area. And we can use the early literacy grant for that because it is a K2 product. The 3-5, less early literacy money for that. And so we actually had a donor offer to give us $150,000 to shore up this area of our curriculum. And in order for us to have students that can proficiently read by the end of third grade, I think we really need to start working on some of these areas and so helping kids get ready for middle school. So we have, we still have kids that are impacted from the pandemic in those upper grades and they just need extra support. So I wrote you an explanation of why I don't have three bids. And I know, and I tried really hard to get three. I've been digging around for weeks trying to find other vendors that really provide this. And Sharon Hofer's like, "Yeah, those are really hard to find." So I gave you a really good explanation of why I don't have three bids because I know that as part of our discussion on budget and finance and all those different things, I know how important it is that we be very transparent about my efforts to find other vendors that do this type of product. And I really struck out beyond a complete new adoption, which I don't want to do.
All right.
So it is about $148,000. I'm asking you to approve it this evening. It's an action item. The money for this was donated by a donor, a generous community donor. Which, gosh, just chokes me up a little bit because like last year, we wouldn't have been able to do some of the things that we pulled off without some of these donations.
Right.
Yeah, so, and this person is extremely generous and was deeply involved in the process, looked at bids, you know, really communicated with me and is really interested in seeing that student growth and achievement through, you know, some of the things that we're implementing in the district. Another piece of this that is not related to this, it's related, but it's not part of your process this evening, is that we also will purchase the STAR assessment product with summer school funds. And that will allow us to really tell that early literacy piece with kinders and those lower grades, how they're doing assessment-wise, beyond just DIBbles. So we've been just using DIBbles because that was cut out of the budget. But because we did receive the summer school grant for $559,000 from ODE, we'll be able to shore up some of those other areas with that money as well. So this is really just foundational support for curriculums.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I am so thrilled, because you know my feelings about helping these areas, to get these kids at these ages, get them up to par, so to speak, so that it becomes easier later. I am overwhelmed with the idea that we have got people that are willing to donate for those causes. It seems like traditionally what goes on, if we need something in the athletic world or something, we'll get all kinds of donations. But I always joked, "No one's ever going to fundraise for the English department." Well, I guess I, maybe I'm wrong. And I'm glad to see I'm wrong. That is, that is, that is great to see. And you answered, one of the questions I had, you answered in your presentation. And that was if it had input and everything from the buildings, teachers and principals and everything. Because we all know it can be the greatest thing in the world and if it's coming just top-down shove, it doesn't work out. And so-
It definitely wasn't top-down because I actually was really familiar with Ekri because I used it in a previous district and I know it works really good. But our teachers were adamant about Ufly and they were adamant about 95%. And when we did some checking around, there were other districts that were actually using that exact component scenario. And we're having really good results. And so for me, I was like such an Ekri fan, I'm like, "Okay, you guys, he's going to tear the bandit off and go with Ufly." But I did other research on that called, you know, I called Dana Nuremberg and I called all the, all the bigwigs in the reading world and said, you know, "Are they both good?" And they said, "Yes." So it was, it's been a whole year-long project for us.
And then the only question I do have, and I was just curious more than anything, how far away are we from the next language arts adoption?
I believe it was '22 was when the last came in, so it'll be '29.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, seven-year cycle.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Josh. Well, my clarifying question on this is, so to be clear, this is not going to cost us anything because the anonymous donation, which is amazing. The only clarifying thing I have was just interesting, the Oregon Department of Education summaries of each of these you gave us doesn't list that they service fourth or fifth grade. It's just, it's interesting.
Yeah, because it's in their early literacy packet, which is really geared towards K2.
Okay.
But this is a, this is a foundational support product for intervention and different things at grades three through five. And one of the things that's great about this is that the early literacy grant will allow us to do training on this. So if we wanted to take it into the lower grades, you know, I mean, it would be, it's something they would actually allow us to pay for with the grant.
It was just strange because it says it doesn't service that, but we're using it for it. But that's, I'm sure it-
It does, it does. Yeah. That's just K2. They don't have a manual for 3-5. But I did want you to know that it is fully an approved product for-
Good work, Kim.
Just a comment. Thank you. And the whole team's hard work on putting this together. I appreciate the explanation of not having the three bids. I know running public organizations, sometimes there's only a certain number of companies. I know running public organizations, sometimes there's only a certain number of companies, maybe it's a sole-source provider that provides exactly what you're looking for, so I appreciate that, that piece too. And then also just the, once again, our community stepping up in a really big way to help our students be successful, so just a huge thank you for that as well, so.
Yeah, I will pass that on to our donor. Thank you.
I have just a, I just breezed through this pretty quickly this afternoon. What is the percentage of kids that we're going to utilize this in a positive way?
Utilize that, it's probably twenty to twenty-five percent of our population. It depends on the, yeah, it's a significant amount of kids. So right now, our current reading scores show that about fifty-one percent of our kids are proficient in reading at third grade. And so, you know, there's a, there's a huge group of kids that need better support.
Okay, so, so what, again, I apologize for my rookie question. So between the fifty-one percent and the twenty-five percent, that leaves twenty-four that we're not reaching. Is there a particular reason why it's not forty-nine percent, or did they catch up on their own?
Um, I don't really, I mean, I can, I mean, I think that there's a certain amount of kids that can do intervention within the classroom and have it be successful.
Okay.
And then there's another set of kids that needs a more intensive intervention. And so we really, we have to see how this system plays with all our title teachers are spent. And so we're doing training soon on, on this system, and so I think that'll be really essential as we, because it has, it has a definite rhythm to it, and you have to figure out what the best reading groupings are for kids and different things. So I think it probably is higher, but I think that there's, you know, if we can get kids to sixty, seventy percent this year, that'd be really cool.
And this supplemental curriculum, is this for the classroom? Is this for the reading specialists? Is this for...
It's a combination.
Okay.
Yeah, so there'll be specialists that use it in the title area, there'll be spent teachers that use it, and then there are some classroom hold group instructional strategies that go with it. Yeah, it's kind of a combination. It's an interesting product. It's a very unique product, and it's going to, I'm going to be really honest with you, it's complicated to implement. So we have to have training, and we have to be patient. And we have teachers coming in in August to do kind of a, an integration between our current core curriculum, which is Wonders, and this product, and Ufly, trying to pick out the very best of Wonders that meets our needs for language and comprehension and vocabulary, and some of the things that Wonders is really good at, and supplementing some of the areas where it's less stellar with these foundational products that really are a systematic, explicit way to teach reading instruction. And I'll have you come in and watch it. I'll give you a tour once we get it all lined out, because once you've seen Ufly or Ekri or any of those products in use, it is a very different way to teach reading. It's very systematic, has a very written...
Yeah, we have, we have dog clickers that we use to trigger the kids with Ekri in my building, so.
Yeah, Ekri works great, and so, and then so does Ufly. So they're, they're similar, they're all based on the science of reading, and they are, they are a very explicit instructional model that it's, it's really hard, it's difficult not to learn how to read in those systems. It's just so systematic that kids just pick it up.
That's wonderful, yeah. These, these kids don't learn how to read proficiently, they're going to be struggling the rest of their time in school.
Yeah, we have to catch them now.
I had a question about the bid. I noticed that Tier One is provided for every school, but Tier Two isn't provided for the smallest schools. Why is that?
Well, we have to, we have to massage that a little bit, because they were going to charge us a really high amount of, we have to, we have to add those in. They had, they get it by paper, they're just not in the digital version, Sarah, so they have a limited amount of students, because they were going to charge us six thousand dollars a site extra.
Yeah, no, not worth it.
So again, with, I know you look shocked. It's a lot. When you have all these small buildings like this, or our district is really configured in a unique way, where we have, you know, little buildings that have sixty, seventy kids in them, the site license for that building is the same price as Mark Twain. So three hundred and thirty kids or sixty kids, and the license is the same. And so we have to be more creative about how we reach those smaller buildings, but the smaller buildings, some of the reading scores are higher, and so there's less need in those areas, but we still will use intervention models over there. We have, we ordered the paper version for them.
Perfect.
Good. Any other discussion concerning curriculum? Why we still have you, Kim, here in discussion? Did you want to talk about, or did you want to talk that at the end of the meeting here, about as far as next meeting?
I can do it real quick, if you don't mind.
No, that'd be, that'd be fine.
So we are busy trying to hire a couple of principals right now, and so it's going to be really difficult to get out of the building at all for Tony and Aye and Brandon and Tom, so we're all really busy with hiring and different things for principals. So I would propose, normally I would say that we could do the meeting on the twenty-eighth, and it would be fine, but if we do it on the twenty-eighth, that's the only time that I can go be away for a couple of days. And so I'm, I would like it if you would, if it, if it fits your schedule, if we can move it backwards to the twenty-first a week, because we'll still be here trying to wrap up principal hiring.
Does that eliminate anybody as having the regular meeting on the twenty-first?
So move it up to the twenty-first, is what we're...
Yeah, off the twenty-eighth into the twenty-first.
Nothing on my schedule.
I'm good. Harvesting berries.
Get here.
I'll try to be here.
As long as you bring us some berries.
I'll bring you guys some cookies or something.
So just a thumbs up, are we good with the twenty-first? Okay.
And then do you want to stay at the six-thirty time, or do you want to, that might be, that might be a topic for another day?
That'd be a topic for that meeting, maybe.
Okay.
And then we can set it for the year.
Okay, so we'll leave that one at seven, and then, okay, then we'll discuss that. Okay, thank you, Tom.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, do we need to do some kind of a vote on this curriculum, or is that all set?
That's coming up to you next time. Okay, we'll get your patience.
I'm trying to figure out the order in which you guys do this.
First, you get to listen to me talk about public comment. Okay, since we do have an action item tonight, we generally at workshop, we don't have public comment, but since we have an action item, we want to give the public an opportunity. And so we will have public comment here.
Phil?
This board chair.
There's nobody online.
There's nobody online?
Yeah.